Thank you, everybody. Mr. Priest, I believe you have something to read for us.
Yes, sir. Someday, I won't have to, but today is not that day. Pursuant to Governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30a, section 20, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this public hearing of the town of Burlington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or review this meeting while in progress as broadcast Bcat Government Cable Access Television, Bcat Government Coverage Facebook Live page by using the link provided in the agenda for WebEx Cisco online meeting via phone at 408-418-9388, meeting number 1299751307. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by commenting on the Bcat Government Coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function at virtual meeting, or via telephone at 781-270-1635. Thank you.
This is Jimmy takes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Sagorino, I believe we'll start off with you. Start off with our first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just as a reminder to the board, we do have a couple of public hearings this evening, so selectmen priests will be monitoring the comments on Facebook Live and the WebEx chat, and I'll monitor the phone line at 781-270-1635. As a reminder to the board, all votes are required to be done by roll call for virtual First agenda item is big one, Mr. Chairman, the appointment of our next police chief. If everybody could just sort of mute if you're at home and you're not speaking, we're getting some feedback through already, so it's gonna be a lot of folks in the meeting tonight. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first agenda item is the appointment of our next police chief. As we talked about during our last meeting, we are very fortunate to have put in process a place several years ago to ensure that we would always have qualified candidates from within our ranks for us to consider for our chief's position, and it worked out very well in this instance. As we all know, Chief Kent was kind enough to give us advance notice of his upcoming retirement, so this appointment will be effective July 1st, 2021. And with that, let me tell you a little bit about Tom Brown.
Excuse me, Paul, I'm gonna interrupt for one second. I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. Could everybody please mute if you are not speaking right now? There's some feedback coming through, and I can't hear what Mr. Sagorino's saying. That'd be truly appreciated. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Paul. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And at this point, let me tell you a little bit about Tom Brown. Tom is a lifelong Burlington resident, having grown up on Manhattan Drive. He's a son of Margaret Peg Brown and Jim Brown. He comes from a family of public servants, being the sixth of seven children and the youngest of four boys. All three of his brothers work for the Burlington Fire Department with his older brother Kevin, recently retiring after 35 years. Tom graduated from Burlington High School in 1990. He received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from UMass Lowell. He also has a minor in psychology, which I think could come in handy working around here with John and I. He started his police career in New Hampshire, primarily with the town of Hudson, where he rose to the ranks of sergeant prior to be appointing, prior to being appointed to the Burlington Police Department in 2001. It would be very difficult for us to go through all the different roles and responsibilities that Tom has held within the department over the years. To that end, we posted Tom's resume on the selectmen's page for the public to review. I would, however, like to go through some of the highlights. He worked as a patrol officer and a drug detective until being promoted to the position of patrol sergeant in 2004. As a sergeant, he worked in the traffic division and again with the detectives, ultimately holding the position of the department prosecutor, which is a very important position within the department, and it manages our relationship with the court system. In 2013, Tom was promoted to lieutenant and was subsequently promoted to deputy chief in 2018. Throughout his time within the department, Tom has had many accomplishments. Again, I just want to highlight a few that come to mind. He brought the department into compliance for its first ever certification award from the Mass Police Accreditation Commission. He designed and implemented the department's current field training program to train our new officers. Tom proposed, designed, and started the Burlington Police Drug Unit, and I know that the board has been very pleased with the quality of the applicants we have been appointing over the past several years. Once we took the necessary steps to get the department removed from the civil service hiring system, we needed an entirely new structure and process to evaluate candidates who wish to become a police officer in Burlington. Tom designed and implemented the department's current recruitment process for new officers and a research to manage the department's first non-civil service promotional examination process, all the while ensuring that the new process was in compliance with our collective bargaining agreements. Tom's work in this area has become the model for communities statewide who wish to take the steps to transition their departments out of the civil service umbrella. This is something we get calls on on a regular basis from other towns. Amazing work done in this area. In his current role as a deputy chief, Tom's responsible for the day-to-day operations of the department under the direction of Chief Kent. Over the past several years, Tom has filled in admirably for Chief Kent for all his absences, both planned and unplanned. He is also, Tom is responsible for internal affairs function of the department, and he handles all department labor issues as a designee of the chief of police. He's a certified instructor for the Massachusetts Police Training Committee, and he teaches criminal law and criminal procedure in the Haverhill Lowell and Reading Police Academies. Somehow in his spare time, Tom went to law school and graduated cum laude. He passed the bar exam and is a member in good standing of the Massachusetts Bar, so he brings to us legal expertise as another one of his skills. Tom's wife, Michelle, has also dedicated her life to assisting others as an oncology hematology nurse in the Beth Israel Leahy Health System. Tom and Michelle share three daughters, Caitlin, Megan, and Jillian, all of whom attend the Burlington Public Schools. So if the board wishes, I'm ready to make the appointment, and as a reminder to everybody, this is effective July 1st, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. I believe the board is ready to make this decision. My question would be, I know a lot of guys want to make a comment to Tom, including myself. Would you like us to make the appointment first and then have a little bantering back and forth?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, why don't we make the appointment now, and then we'll have an opportunity for Tom to say a few words, as well as any of the board members who would like to speak on it.
I see Chief Kent on here also. I'd like to have a little input from Mr. Chief Kent there. So go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Effective July 1st, 2020, 2021, I appoint Thomas P. Brown to the position of chief of police for the town of Burlington and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved. Second. We'll move to the second. Okay, gentlemen, we need a roll call vote here. Mr. Hogan.
Absolutely.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Tigas.
Yes.
Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. So 5-0-0. Mr. Brown, would you like us to speak first, or would you like to, because you can get even with us afterwards? So whatever you'd like to do, Tom.
I don't mind going first, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
So first off, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Sagorino, and also Mr. Denizio, for the confidence you have in me to make this appointment tonight. Obviously, without your support, this professional achievement could never be possible, so I'm truly humbled, and I realize the huge responsibility I have on my shoulders from day one. That is not lost on me at all. I do need to take time now to thank Chief Kent. I'll keep my comments brief for now and give him his complete due at a later time, but I think we all agree that he deserves tons of praise. But in summary, 11 years ago, he came to Burlington and took over a department that was still reeling from years of turmoil. He took the reins and he injected a professionalism into this department that survived the, survived the test of time, and he sought to improve the operations and make us demand more of ourselves. I often tell people that the biggest compliment I can give him is that he knows what he doesn't know, and that may sound strange, but too many times when you get into an upper command position, you feel as though you know everything and you should know everything, and when you act like that, you simply stop learning. The chief never stopped learning, and therefore, because of that, he never stopped teaching. And I've been the beneficiary of his mentorship now for 11 years. He's put Burlington PD into a position to succeed, and it's my main objective to bring this department to an even higher height, despite the fact I'm well aware of the big shoes I have to fill. To the board, I wish to thank all of you for the confidence you've shown in me. Again, without it, this achievement is not possible. I appreciate the kind words that you said last week, and I'm humbled by the knowledge that the town administration and the board of selectmen feel that I have the necessary skills and qualifications to lead the department into the future. Has been, it's been said thousands of times in my career. The objective of every leader is to leave their command in a better position than they found, and Chief Kent has certainly done this, and now you're allowing me to take on this task into the future. My goal is to make the department even better, because it's never acceptable for complacency. To the members of the Burlington Police Department, both sworn and civilian, I'm proud to be the next chief of police and to work with all of you to continue to strive towards making this department the absolute best municipal police force in Massachusetts. Because of Chief Kent and all of you, I believe that we have already achieved that designation, and this would not be possible if it wasn't for the great people and professional work that each of you does every single day. So I look forward to the next chapter, and I know that someday when it's my turn to move on, the department will be left in even better hands. Now, I would be remiss if I did not thank my family for their unending support, so I wish my father was here to experience this, but I know he's with us right now. But as Paul already mentioned, my wife, Michelle, continues to be my rock every day. I could not have achieved my professional goals without her support and constant encouragement. And also to my kids, Caitlin, Megan, and Jillian, you can have anything you want in life, but it's my belief that nothing worth having ever comes easy. So work for it, be proud of it, like I am tonight. To the rest of my family and all of our friends, thank you for all of the positive comments and support. I appreciate it more than I'll ever be able to let you know what we paid. Finally, I know you have a long meeting ahead of you, and I've taken too much of your time, but please know this, I cannot promise that I won't make mistakes. There is a definite learning curve here, and I will do my best every day to lessen it, but the promise I will make is that I will give 100% to both the Burlington Police Department and the town of Burlington. And I thank you very much for all of your support. The Burlington Police Department isn't done accomplishing great things together, and I look forward to the future, and thank you again.
Thank you, Tom. Very well said.
Thank you.
I see the chief is on here, so I'm gonna let the chief go first, if you have something to say.
Let me get on and hear Joe. Here we go. I couldn't be more pleased with this appointment. Deputy Chief Brown has earned it. He's one of the hardest workers I've seen in my years in policing. He's also one of the smartest officers and deputy chiefs and lieutenants and sergeants I've ever dealt with. I believe he's the man to bring this department to the next level. I'm positive of it, and I also think we're gonna have some big changes ahead in law enforcement, and Tom's the man to do those changes, and I couldn't be happier, and I congratulate the town administrator and the board for this decision, because the department's gonna be in good hands, and I'm very, very pleased. I've worked beside him and closely with him for the last three years, and there's not a better man for the job. So thank you very much, and congratulate, congratulations, Tom.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Tigas, you worked with them, so be my guest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. One, acknowledging Chief Kent and all the work he has done. He took our department from the past, maintained it through the present, and Deputy Brown has prepared the department for the future. And with regards to the hiring process that he organized, created for the department, Burlington has an unbelievable quality of officers, and not only are they just quality officers, but the diversity of the department now is so much more than years ago. It's such a diverse, intelligent department. It's probably the most diverse police department in this entire area, if not the entire, most diverse department in town itself. So it's not just hiring people, it's hiring good quality people who represent the town, and I think he can only improve on what Chief Kent has established, and I congratulate both of them, and I look forward to working with them, you know, from, in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, congratulations. The same things we said when you were first appointed as the deputy chief exist today, only now you're another step closer to the top, and with all the kudos that Chief Kent has gotten over the last 11 years, I expect in the next 11 years, the same kudos will be said of you, because you've never stopped learning. So congratulations. The transition's gonna be perfect, it's gonna be smooth. We are gonna miss Chief Kent, but we have Chief Brown next. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an incredible resume, and the town of Burlington is so fortunate to have such a talented individual and a, as well as a hometown guy, take the reins of our police department. At our last session, I spoke to Tom about the great personal sacrifice you had to make to achieve this goal. I had the great pleasure of not only knowing you, but working alongside three of your brothers. So my comments tonight is really aimed towards the entire Brown family, honestly. Your work ethic and commitment to be the best that you can be, no doubt, comes from the Brown family values. I know your dad would be so proud of you tonight, Tom. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, you said best yourself, you know, nothing is as great in this world as the things you go and earn for yourself. You know, I subscribe to that and hope to instill that in my children as much as you do at home. You know, in the past couple of years, we've had the chance to get to know each other, both as neighbors and professionally, you know, and I've always admired your enthusiasm and creative thinking. You know, it's, you know, it's unique. You know, you're not afraid to think outside the box, and I think that, you know, everyone, you know, within the administration here on the board, we all see that. You know, I see in you, you know, fortitude, humility, intellect, honor, and agility. You know, just as I was thinking, you know, today, there's some words that I jotted down when, when I was thinking about this. You know, obviously, you know, alongside Chief Kent, you've worked diligently to help raise and maintain the Burlington Police Department and leading the way, not just here in the town, but across the state. This Commonwealth, you know, looks to our police department, you know, as a benchmark for how to do things, which is not an easy thing to do, let alone maintain. So obviously, you know, it is with this appointment that we hope that not only you'll continue to do those things, but, you know, raise the bar, you know. I believe that you will, because, you know, you're, much like Chief Kent and a lot of folks, you know, in this room, someone who continues to learn and continues to grow, you know, because that's how we get better. So congratulations. Look forward to working with you. All the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Brown, we've heard a lot tonight of greatness of you, but I can tell you this, 30 years ago, when you were coming into the barber shop, you kinda knew it was gonna happen. You were just that person. You had a drive in you that was beyond a lot of people I've ever met in my life, and I'm gonna accomplish that, I'm gonna accomplish that, I'm gonna put that towards your family. Your dad and your mom made you who you are today. I said this to your brother the other day, he would be so proud of you, of the person that you became, a husband, a father, a fantastic person in town, and I couldn't be personally any happier for you to become the next chief of police in the town you grew up in. So thank you, and I know that we're gonna have another meeting where we're gonna say a lot more great things. So all the best to you, good luck, and I know you'll do a great job for this town of Burlington. Thank you for being a friend, and thank you for being the next chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. I wish we were all here for that picture, to tell you that right now. Yes, sir.
Did those haircuts take longer 30 years ago than they do today?
I knew that was coming, Jim. Thank you.
Tom, that's not what it was meant for.
He always goes over the line.
All right. Thank you, Tom. All right. It's all voted and approved. Thank you very much, everybody. Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman and had reshuffled the agenda items a little bit to put some people closer together. So the next item up on our agenda is continued public hearing on cemetery rules and regulations that Mr. Sanchez is here, if the board has any further questions from our last session on this.
So, Mr. Sanchez.
So, Mr. Chairman, the only, the only update that I have is that we, we made the one change that was requested at the selectmen's meeting about a month ago, which is related to the space in front of the headstone. Now, we wrote that it has to be within the 12 inches from the headstone. So it's absolutely clear that it's not just an area 12 inches by the size of the headstone, but an area that it has to be within those 12 inches. Everything else is as it was originally proposed. So I'm here to answer any questions.
So thank you. A notes of public hearing, we'll get to that in one second, to hear from the public. Mr. Denizio, if you see someone out there that has their hand up and I don't see them, please either shoot me a text real quick or just let me know, not affect anybody out there that has a question. I know that some of the selectmen had questions, but they were all answered, I'm assuming at this point, or do we have any other questions? If you do, as a selectman, please raise your hand, I can see all of us right now. If you have any questions, Mr. Hogan, okay? We're right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly, John, will all of this be incorporated in whatever material you give to people when they come to purchase a plot so that they have it right there in front of them?
So, Bob, what we plan to do is, is two things. One is, we wanna put the boxes outside our offices where we have these rules, so they can actually see it right in the building. Typically, people do not purchase the graves from us directly. The graves are purchased through the funeral homes, and the funeral home does give the families a copy of the rules. That's part of what we need to do. So, so it's not directly given by us, but it's given through the funeral home to the families. Yes.
Mr. Tigas.
Thank you, Mr. Jim, and just point of order, this is a discussion, not public hearing, if I'm not, if I'm correct. So just wanted to clarify that, but all I'm gonna mention at this point is, you know, with these rules and regulations set by the board of select, no, select board, Mr. Sanchez, can we do like a review in, say, six months, just to see how compliance is and if there's anything that needs to be tweaked?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Mr. Priest, nothing. Mr. Runyon, nothing? Okay. Why did I think this was a public hearing? Oh, it's not a public.
I think, I think I may have said that, Mr. Chairman, so I think that was my mistake.
All right, thank you. Okay, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, before, before you take the vote, if you, if you don't mind, just in addition to the funeral homes, given that when we do send the deed out to the owners, a copy of the rules goes out with the deed. I forgot to mention that in the earlier question.
Very good. Okay, thank you. So on that note, if everybody's all set, I'll take a motion at this point. Motion by Michael to approve the cemetery rules and regulations, second by Mr. Hogan. We'll go right down the list again. Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Tigas.
Yes.
Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. So 5-0-0. Thank you, thank you, John, and I'd like to thank the committee, because they put a lot of time and effort into this. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next agenda item would be proposed outdoor watering restrictions, which is also Mr. Sanchez.
Okay, thank you, thank you again. So we've been doing this for the last few years, and we're back. Now, if you recall, last time it was in front of the board, it was to declare a full water ban, and that was at the end of the year in 2020, which will allow us to take water during an emergency through the winter and allows to do work in the facilities. And obviously, we time it through the winter month, so it doesn't affect the residents during the winter. Now, that water ban expires at the end of this month, so we're gonna need to have something for the summer, summer 2021. So what we're proposing this year is not very different than what we had in the past. We have three steps. The step one, which is what I'm recommending that you approve effectively immediately, or I prefer, so to say, is to allow the use of automated and sprinkle systems every other day, either mornings or evenings, and we're making that clarification, because we need to maintain our levels of use as low as we can until we have a full connection with the MWRA. And then we have levels 2 and 3, which will be based on, on the drought, if there is a drought. The state has no conditions right now for cities and towns that when there are droughts, whether it is mild or severe, cities and towns should react to them. So, so I drafted this proposal based on what those regs will be probably sometime early this year. So we'll be in sync with what the state will be requiring. And again, all we're asking for right now is to go back to the every other day, allowing everybody to use their systems.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the board for questions. Mr. Priest, any questions on the water ban we seem to go through everywhere?
No, not really. I guess what I'd like to say is, you know, anything that we can be doing to continue, you know, getting the MWRA story out there for residents to understand that, you know, this is a process, you know, while though there's, there's been, you know, it's been moving at a good clip, and that, you know, we've been getting our approvals on time, and, you know, things have been going well in our favor, it's still not, you know, something that we can just flick a switch and, you know, be pumping, you know, actually gallons of water in the town. Also, you know, I guess it's not gonna be the best time to do it, but, you know, since it relates to it, for the board's consideration, I think that we should discuss the possibility of adjusting the violations and the fines associated with them, and perhaps bringing that to town meeting. I know May is too, too late at this point, but for the fall, perhaps. I'm not sure that the current fines associated with the first and second violations is enough of a disincentive for folks to not be following the ban. But otherwise, you know, I mean, I, I get it, right? We have not enough water, we need to maintain certain levels of water, and we're not fully connected to the MWRA, so I'm a supporter of this.
Thank you. Mr. Tigas.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan.
I'm all set.
Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, excuse me, to the residents of town, I, we truly appreciate your patience, we're gonna get through this, and I would urge you to please, please be compliant with the odd even rules. We got into some issues last year, you sort of forced us to do, make some moves that we didn't wanna do, because people weren't following the rules. So again, I ask for your patience, and I urge you to be compliant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Sanchez, I just wanna make sure that the rules and the regulations that everyone kinda knows on this, so it's an odd even system, it works on the number of your house, odd, even, right? And then it works for business just as much as it does for residents, right?
That's correct.
If there's a business in town that seems to be watering at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, they're not supposed to. So they work on the So, they work on the same presence we do. Uh, I believe that last year, there was a few of those out there. Uh, Mr. Runyon's a hundred percent right. We, they, you played our hand a couple times and we had a few things that we really didn't want to do, but, you know, it's, it's all about the water right now. And the patience of the residents has been great. Uh, I'm fully in support of this ban once again, even though my yard looks like the Sahara Desert. Uh, but that's okay. Uh, we'll get through it. So, at this point, I would like to take the motion to approve. Motion by Jimmy, second by Mr. Hogan. Need a roll call vote, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Five zero zero. There you go, John.
Thank you very much.
On a side note, Nick, I do like your idea of the, uh, the fines. I think that minimum, I think they need to go up. Sorry, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, we're back to, uh, Mr. Sagorino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next agenda item is health insurance for elected officials. Uh, the board had a discussion on this, uh, a meeting or two ago and, uh, solicited some information, uh, through Betty from, from other elected boards and committees. And, uh, this is just a continuation of that discussion. Uh, Treasurer Gary, Gary Genino is here, uh, if there are any further questions from the board also.
So, Gary, you gave us a great report last time and I think we all understood it. So, I think what I will do at this particular moment, I'm gonna go through the board and ask if they have any further questions about it. And then, uh, if they do, you can answer those questions for us. So, we'll start with Mr. Priest.
Uh, no, no further questions. Thank you.
No questions. Mr. Tigas.
Uh, no additional, no questions at this time.
Mr. Hogan?
I have a question, I'm not sure that Gary is necessarily the right one to ask, but I'll ask it anyway. Um, we're having these conversations, um, and we have three people who are retired. Are they kind of, uh, uh, left out of the conversation because they are now retired?
I, I would think that's up to the board. I, I treated it as one total when I was doing my analysis.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Gary. I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I've, I've made my position clear, um, over the, over the past several years on this, on this matter. Uh, I'm willing to grandfather those, uh, currently in the program and, uh, eliminate that, that benefit going forward.
Thank you, Mike. So, at this point, um, what's on the table right now is to, to forego the health insurance for elected officials as of this vote immediately. Uh, one second, Jim, we'll get right to you. Uh, so, once this vote is taken, uh, anybody that has it, is grandfathered in to stay there and keep their insurance. Anybody new that comes in as of two weeks from now, when the election rolls around, they cannot obtain the health insurance from the town. So, that's what we have on the table. As long as we're understanding for that, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead. I'll take a motion, but Mr. Tigas, you had something to say first.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna make a motion and put a time specific so that there is no, um, gray area or, or anything. I was gonna make a motion that, um, I actually concur, I concur completely with Selectman Runyon said, uh, I would grandfather, actually, I'll put it in the form of a motion. I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we grandfather all current persons receiving this benefit and cease it, uh, or, or stop it for all elected officials, uh, effective immediately, with the exception of those who, who have it currently, if that makes sense.
Mr. Sagorino, does that make sense?
I don't know if it makes sense the way he said it, but I think, uh, we all sort of understand, uh, what he's saying. I, I think, uh, Selectman Runyon may have a clarification.
I, yeah, you, you know what, I don't know, I actually, I'd like to amend, uh, Jim's motion to exclude the, the town clerk and any elected official who can, on a regular, uh, basis, provide, um, proof that they're working twenty hours a week.
Mike, I, I would say that that will, what you could, you can clarify it in the motion, but that's, uh, that's the state law as it's written. So, um, any, any full-time elected official would, would, would not be harmed by this. And again, as you, as you indicated, anyone that works twenty hours a week also could petition for the benefit as well.
Okay, so, at this point, we're gonna take, uh, Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Could Jim repeat his motion?
Alright. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, approve this and all current, uh, elected officials are receiving this benefit, continue to receive this benefit. However, any future, uh, elected employee who is not full-time and does not work twenty hours a week or more, not be allowed to receive this, not be, uh, um, eligible for this benefit effective immediately, if that makes any more sense than what I said before.
Okay, I just thought, I just- I just thought Jim said something about, uh, uh, a pointed time, so I didn't know if he was gonna say for a certain amount of years. I'm, I apologize.
No, I was, I mean, my intent was immediately so that there is no gray area and people can't say, "Well, you said it on, or you voted on this date, but however, this happened." And so, I would, my, my request is to, uh, uh, ma- move it forward immediately.
Okay. Paul, does that make sense now? We okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. No questions, the Gary is on the phone, but that's alright. Uh, I need a second on that motion. Second by Bob. Gentlemen, it's gonna be a roll call vote once again. So, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, um, I was gonna abstain, I'll say yes. I do take the health insurance, so I was gonna abstain. Yes, for me. So, we're there. Alright? Fantastic. Mr. Sagorino, moving right along. Goodnight, Gary.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, next up, we have, uh, a continuation of a, a public hearing, uh, related to RCN. Um, just as a reminder to the board, the purpose of that public hearing, uh, was for the board to, uh, vet, um, the purchaser of RCN to ensure that they would be able to have the resources to continue to provide services to our, our residents here in Burlington. Uh, you asked all those questions at the last meeting. Um, our attorney, uh, Bill Solomon is here, our attorney on, on cable TV, Bill Solomon is here. Uh, he has drafted a decision for the board and it was in your backup. Um, so, really, um, all, Mr. Steele from, uh, RCN is here as well, if there's any additional questions. But, really, um, um, everything that the board had discussed at the prior hearing, um, is, is encompassed, uh, within that, that decision. So, uh, it is a public, uh, public hearing, so if we wanna check to see if there's any members of the public here that wanna speak on this, uh, then the board can close the hearing, uh, deliberate on the material and then, and then take a vote.
Okay. So, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Raise your hand or, I don't see them on my screen.
Uh, there's none in the WebEx chat, uh, Mr. Chairman, there's none on the phone. So, I guess, uh, Selectman Priest, is there anything on Facebook?
No.
Thank you.
I don't know if you are able to hear me, but this is Jennifer O'Reardon, I was wondering if I could speak about this?
Yep.
Sure, thank you. Um, so, my name is Jennifer O'Reardon, I'm a resident in Burlington. Um, I am also the Director of Health Physics and Radiation Safety at Lahey Hospital and Medical Center. Um, and I was asked to comment on this, uh, because there have been a number of citizens that have brought up the fact that there are health concerns about 5G being installed in and around Burlington. Is this not the appropriate hearing?
Jennifer, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to do that, but I believe you're talking about the small cell towers that are coming-
Yes, okay, I'm sorry.
And this is a totally different, this is-
I agree. My fault, I'm sorry, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer, I appreciate it.
Sorry.
Thank you. Don't, don't be sorry. Okay. So, now, is there anybody else out there or do I have a motion? William? Williams raising his hand? Solomon?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh, Bill Solomon, like, Special Cable Counsel. Uh, the town administrator summed it up very, very well, everything's in the decision. But, I thought, uh, if you remember, the, the outstanding issue last time was the question about, uh, the Stone Peak, the party that's gonna get control of RCN, about their, um, view and sort of, um, not official commit, but, but position on moving ahead with cable television in the town of Burlington, uh, not just the other services where, which we don't currently regulate. And, uh, Mr. Steele was very, very helpful, uh, we spoke afterwards and he provided a letter, uh, that you have in your packet, where it's authorized by Stone Peak to state, and if you like, I'll just read it if you'd like. In fact, let Tom, well, Tom, let me read it. Uh, it states that, that, uh, uh, Stone Peak has authorized me to state, Mr. Steele writes, that cable in Burlington and throughout the RCN network is very much a part of their future plans. RCN will be encouraged to continue to improve its cable service in Burlington to meet future needs and respond to competitive challenges as they arise. So, that was the question that was, uh, was raised last time, uh, partly because of the nature of not being- beforehand, uh, counsel for Stone Peak wasn't clear what he was authorized to say. Since then, uh, the parties have spoken. I think that letter is a fantastic letter that discusses, uh, that RCN, as controlled by Stone Peak, uh, looks forward to, uh, working and committing itself, uh, consistent with the competitive challenges to cable television. Uh, and so, I, I thank Mr. Steele and Stone Peak and their counsel for providing, uh, that letter.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Mr. Steele, any comment?
No, uh, I think we said it all at the public hearing and, uh, thank you, um, for, I look forward to closing the hearing and, uh, seeing the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon, you had your hand up earlier?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, uh, make the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made, is it seconded by Mr. Tigas? Uh, sorry, Nick, he had to stand up first. So, motion made and seconded. Uh, now, we need a roll call vote, please, uh, to close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. So, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, gentlemen, any comments or a motion on this? Uh, put your hand up if I can see you, Mr. Priest, go right ahead.
Just wanna thank Mr. for taking the time to, you know, go back to Stone Peak and having that conversation and, and putting it, waiting for us, it's just a pleasure, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Runyon, you had your hand up.
Yeah, again, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna make the motion that we approved the contract as, um, as shown in the backup material.
Okay, motion made by Michael, seconded by-
Second.
Okay. Mr. Priest? We were quick that time, Nick. Motion made, seconded. Uh, gentlemen, we need a roll call vote again. So, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Five zero zero in favor. Thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Steele, Mr. Solomon-
Thank you.
Much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Mr. Sagorino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next item is a new public hearing, uh, for a grant allocation on Great Meadow Road. Uh, so, we will need a, a member to please read the, the hearing notice into the record and then, uh, you can open up to the public and, and have the hearing.
Who would that be?
Usually, it's Selectman Tigas.
Yep.
Stand by one and I will have that in a second.
Number sixty-five. Jim.
We're having a little, uh, frozen computer issue here, so bear with me.
I think that's what made it, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, you want to grab this one? I got it up.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind, I have a little computer issue here, the, I didn't wanna print out a hundred twenty-six page agenda. It was gonna go off the, uh, computer, but, if you don't mind, Nick, and then I'll, I'll get the next one.
Yeah, you get the next one. Alright, so, the Burlington Board of Selectmen here by gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, February- that says it's February. Is this a continuation, sorry, before I-
No, it's new.
So, should I amend that to March?
Well, let's hold on one second, Nick. Uh, Betty, you have it in front of you and you just offered to read it. Do you have the one that has-
It's actually, yes, it actually should read, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Selectman Priest, it's posted as Monday, March twenty-two, at six o'clock, at or after six o'clock, to consider this petition.
Okay, alright, I can pick it up from there, sorry about that. Alright, so, the Burlington Board of Selectmen here by gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, at or after, uh, six PM, to consider the petition from Verizon New England Incorporated for permission to lay and maintain underground conduits with the wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public way or ways. Great Meadow Road, place two four-inch PVC conduits approximately twenty feet from existing pole P four-three slash one A in a northeasterly direction to the property line of ten Great Meadow Road to provide services to new construction. The plans and supporting documentation are available for public inspection by contacting bmda@burlington.org. The plans will also be available on the town website, HTTPS, uh, colon backslash backslash www.burlington.org, backslash five-five-six backslash public hyphen hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, um, you gotta make a motion to open the public hearing at this point, correct?
Uh, yes, please. Then we can hear from, uh, the petitioner, who I believe, if Verizon's not here, we will have Tom Hayes, uh, in here to, to present.
Okay. So, I need a motion, gentlemen, to, uh, open the public hearing and that would be-
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Seconded. I need a roll call vote once again, board, gentlemen. Said it. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Public hearing is now open. Um, Mr. Sagorino, who, Mr. Hayes, there you go. Is he here?
Yes. Alright. Good evening. So, this, this, uh, petition is to set a new pole, the new facility, uh, ten Great Meadow Road. So, this will provide power to the, uh, the new recreation, uh, central maintenance facility at that location. So, it's, um, you know, it's, uh, pretty simple. We have an existing pole, pulling power down off of that pole underground, uh, about twenty feet into the property.
Right. Thank you. Um, gentlemen, we'll stop, Mr. Priest, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Tigas?
Uh, negative, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan?
No.
Mr. Runyon?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Morandi, I have no questions. Uh, this is a public hearing, so, uh, if somebody sees somebody with their hand up that I don't see, please, uh, chime in one at a time. Anybody out there with questions?
I don't see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Anything on the other? Nothing, nothing next, okay. Alright, thank you. Uh, seeing there be no comments, uh, we need to hear from the proponent at this point, or if he's not- we just heard from Mr. Hayes, so-
Correct.
I think we're, I think we're all set, right?
Mr. Chairman, this was a, a town petition.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. Says it right there, if I just read the whole thing, I would have understood that. Thank you. Alright, so, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing. So, move by Michael and seconded by Mr. Hogan. Roll call vote, gentlemen, to close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The public hearing is now closed. I would need a motion to pass. Or did I? Motion made by Michael, seconded by Nick. Thank you. Need a roll call vote again, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Five zero zero in favor. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Sagorino, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we do have a continuation of another public hearing for a grant of location to move a pole on Margaret Street. You may recall from several meetings ago that the board was made aware that the pole was already moved. We were able to look into that and we found out that it was moved due to safety concerns. It was rotted out and it was moved at the request of a resident on that street. I, as well as the board, were very disappointed when we find out a pole's been moved without permission. So Tom Hayes, I did forward you a letter that Tom Hayes did send to Verizon just to sort of put them on notice that we're displeased and we would prefer that they follow the correct procedure and go for permission first. So on this particular case, that was missed. I'm not sure if there's anybody from the petitioner in here in the meeting that wants to speak on it. But that was essentially the reason why the pole had already been moved. The only recourse for the board really would be to tell them to put it back and to where it was, which I think is counterproductive to and typically will be disruptive to typically these requests come from a resident that want a pole replaced or moved. So I would not recommend that you do that on this instance. But this is the matter that was before the board several weeks ago. Public hearing is currently open. If you want to check to see if there's anyone here that would wish to speak and then you can close it off, deliberate and vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is here. Mr. Watt?
Yes. Hi, this is James. I work for Pike Telcom. I'm representing Verizon and Karen Levesque about this pole relocation. Paul, you've pretty much hit the nail on the head of everything I was going to say there regarding the matter. The pole was set by Verizon on November tenth. All work from necessary parties with the old pole removed, completed on November twentieth. The line foreman had told Karen that he had pulled a permit to replace the pole and Karen said that, I believe it was Anthony Marini, spoke with Mr. Hayes regarding the matter about the confusion between having a permit and seeing a petition hearing. And I was told that this wouldn't happen in the future.
Thank you very much. Anybody from the public that's before we get into the selectmen? Paul, have you seen anybody? Nick? Anybody?
No, on Facebook.
All right, so seeing there's no one to speak on this in the public hearing, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Nick and Mike, seconded by Mike. Need a roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. The public hearing is now closed. Gentlemen, any comments or? Just put your hand up quick if you have one. Mr. Priest, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so I guess, you know, just I know, you know, it won't happen again, but let's just assume that, you know, for the sake of me saying it out loud, that if there's a damaged pole that's causing risk to the public, you know, go ahead and fix it, but then please notify everyone as soon as possible. If this was completed on November twentieth, it's now March twenty-second. You know, we're a good ways away from, you know, not having been notified, you know, and I think it makes everyone look a little silly that we have to, you know, bring it back a second time, you know, for something that didn't even have happened. It would have been better for us just to have that conversation back then and, you know, be done with it or at least have been notified of it. Thank you to Mr. Hayes for sending the letter. Much appreciated, you know, and that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow on what selectman Priest said, reported on November tenth and replaced on November twentieth. It's about nine to ten days. We understand, I understand that emergencies happen and stuff, but there's a ten-day window when the town could have been notified. And, you know, we understand things happen and things, but if the town, the administration and engineering can be notified just so that they're aware and we can, you know, take that into consideration when we have to, you know, approve ex post fast facto. So that's all I want to say is there were ten-day window that the town could have been notified on.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon, Mr. Hogan, anything? Nothing? No shaking your head? No. So I'll just say this quickly. I think where it was a pole that was rotted or needed to be moved because of safety reasons, I think that we should come up with a plan as a town that they don't have to come in front of us for that type of thing. I don't know what the legal status is. I'd have to ask Paul that. But if they get in touch with Tom and they move the pole the next day because of it rotting, because of it car accident or whatever it may be, because of safety, the town, they should be able to just move that thing. Not because they want to or they, our neighbor wants it moved or whatever it is, but for that safety reason only. I think that that should be done immediately for the safety of the residents of the town of Burlington. That's just my thought. I don't know what the legal side of that is. I'd have to ask Paul that. So Paul, I'll ask you. Can I see your hand, Bob? One second. Paul, is there, is there legal side of that, if they were to just move it?
Mr. Chairman, I can work with Tom Hayes in engineering and town council just to sort of understand what a good process would be in that situation. I think clearly they'd be well within their rights to replace it in the same location if it was, if it was rotting or damaged, but in this case, the pole got moved considerable distance from the original pole. So I guess that would be a little bit of a difference there. But I think that they're clearly able to replace a pole where there is a pole without any further permissions from the town.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the last, at least eleven years that I've been on the board, there have been situations and opportunities for us to take votes, giving the town administrator temporary narrow responsibility for situations like this where we don't have a meeting coming up, something needs to be addressed. And maybe in the future, we need to get legal counsel to tell us how in this situation, we can take a vote, give Paul or the town administrator, you know, in general, the responsibility of approving something like this without us having to be involved if we don't have a meeting coming up so that all the, all the rules and regs are followed.
Absolutely. That's what I was trying to get at and you put it in a lot more elegant words than I have. So that was good. Thank you. All right, so at this point, I'll need a motion to approve. That would have pretty happened.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jimmy, seconded by Mike. Roll call vote, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest? Yes. Mr. Miranda, yes. Okay, there you go. Thank you. James, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have a continuation of a liquor license for Del Frisco's Grill. As the board knows, this one's been continued several times now. The attorney for the petitioner has kept us in very kept up with providing us information whenever we need it in terms of an update as to what's going on with the liquor license. You know, as the board is aware, over this past year, it's been very difficult for anything related to restaurants or within the town. So I believe that our most recent update from Mr. Devlin indicated that they were in active negotiations with somebody to take over that space. So it does appear that there has been some movement. I'm not sure if Mr. Devlin is here in the meeting with us or not, but that's the update on this license and we can hear from Mr. Devlin if he is in the room.
There is no representative here. As long as they have their letter, they were okay to move forward. We'll just be up to the board now to select a date if they want to continue it.
Betty, what date should we pick, Betty?
May twenty-fourth?
Yes, please.
So if I could get a motion to move this to continue it to May twenty-fourth?
Just add, Mr. Chairman, there's a potential that we would have town meeting that night as well, so you know, you might just want to set a time that's a little bit earlier than the traditional time. Typically, we try to squeeze in a selectmen's meeting before town meeting. And depending upon how long town meeting goes, we may still be in session that night. So if you want to make the hearing for six fifteen instead of six thirty?
So moved, yeah. Beautiful. So motion by Bob, seconded by Jimmy. Gentlemen, roll call vote, please. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Thank you. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Paul, we have a new one coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is a new public hearing for a class-two automobile sales license and we will need a selectmen to read this, add into the record and then you can get started.
Got that one covered, Mr. Chairman. You ready?
Good.
Okay, the board of selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, at or after six thirty P M. At the Town Hall, twenty-nine Center Street, Burlington, Mass., second floor, main meeting room. The consideration for approval for a class-two license, Q-two Motorsports, two Edwards Road, Burlington, Mass. Board of Selectmen, public hearing notices are printed in the Burlington Daily Times Chronicle, may also be downloaded from the following site, masspublicnotices.org. Now, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we have to add anything about it being on the lines to Zoom. That's not in the notice.
Paul, will you have to add that in there? I don't believe so.
I don't believe so either.
Okay, that's the motion, that's the notice of the public hearing then.
Good, okay. So at this point, we're going to have to open up. Paul, you have any, any more to add to this or should I just open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, you can open the public hearing. I do know the petitioner is in the room, Ms. Altamari, to address the board on any questions or concerns you may have and you can open the public hearing.
Gentlemen, need a motion to open the public hearing? So moved. Motion by Bob, seconded by Nick. Nice work. Ready to roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon? Mr. Tigges?
Yes. Yes, but I have a question for clarification. Is this item number one, zero, six, zero or zero, six, one?
It's zero.
So it's to South Bedford Street, not Edwards Road?
This is on to South Bedford Street, right?
Right.
Yeah, the one I read was Edwards Road.
You read the wrong one?
Edwards Road for the automobile license.
They're both here for a class-two license.
And they're both here at the same time, for the same time. So let's just continue with the one you read, please.
Okay.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Priest, I'm still on roll call vote.
This is to open the public hearing for two hours.
Yep, this is all for the public hearing. Yes. Mr. Miranda, yes. So now the public hearing is open. I'd like to hear from the proponent first. Who is, who's, who's out there for that? I don't?
Hello?
Yeah.
That'll be Mr. Fagie, Zach Fagie, please.
Hello?
Yes, Zach, how are you?
Yep.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you guys?
Just explain to the board a little bit of what you're doing.
I currently, I currently own the license up there under Royal Shine Auto Sales and I work with Ben, who's actually in the building there doing Q car care. We're just looking to transfer the name on the license from Royal Shine Auto Sales to Q-two Motorsports. There won't be any, any changes in anything besides the name of the license.
All right, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we'll start off with questions from the board at this point. Mr. Runyon, any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, this looks, this one's pretty traditional, pretty straightforward. No questions.
Mr. Priest?
No questions, sir.
Mr. Tigges? You're on mute, but I think you said no questions. He is still on mute. All right, Mr. Hogan, any questions?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. It's a public hearing, so we've opened it. Any questions from the public? Anybody see anything out there that are missing?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. This is Betty.
Hi, Betty, go ahead.
I just want to thank Ben and in both, both Ben and Zach for getting all the documents together. They were extremely cooperative and they have all the inspections done and everything looked really good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much for your help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Seeing there's no other questions we had from public or nothing out there on Facebook or anyplace else that's asking? Shaking your head? No, okay. So I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, but Nick and Bob, roll call vote, please, to close the public hearing. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So five zero zero, we close the public hearing. Any more discussion on this, gentlemen? If you have a question or for the Zach, just raise your hand quickly and I'll call on you. Because I can see all of you guys. Nobody? Okay, so now I'll need a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the transfer of the class-two license from Royal Shine Auto Sales to Edwards Road to Q-two Motorsports at two Edwards Road.
Okay. I have a second on that. Mr. Runyon, thank you. We need a roll call vote, gentlemen, once again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Transfer has gone through. Now we move on to the next. What is that noise? Never mind. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have another new public hearing for class-two automobile license for internet sales.
Can I take that, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, right ahead, sir.
Okay, Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, at or after six thirty P M. At the Town Hall, twenty-nine Center Street, Burlington, Mass., second floor meeting room, main meeting room, to consider for approval, class-two license, K and K Internet Sales to South Bedford Street, Burlington, Mass., oh, one, eight, oh, three. Board of Selectmen hearing notices are printed in the Burlington Daily Times Chronicle and may also be downloaded from the following site, masspublicnotices.org.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges. Now I'm going to need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. We open the public hearing.
So we'll by Bob and Jimmy, seconded. Any other roll call vote? Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Five zero zero, public meeting is open. It's the proponent, the two proponents are still here, I'm assuming? All one?
Different one.
Got two. Ben, are you here? Is that Ben? Great.
Ms. Altamari, I think you're up.
Okay, there you go. Go right ahead. Explain to us what you're doing.
I'm actually interested in receiving the license to sell online. It's just strictly for wholesale to supplement my income, basically.
Okay, and I'm sure that the board's going to have some questions for you. Did you fill out all the paperwork that? Betty, did you fill out all the paperwork we needed, Doug?
About maybe odd, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, let's start with, with Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually, based the backup, I don't think I have any questions. Everything seems pretty clear. Isn't this is falling under class-two? And, you know, I appreciate Ms. Altamari's taking the time and diligence to speak with everybody and get, you know, all the feedback. And I mean, it seems fine. If anyone has any other questions that may raise questions for me, I might take my hands up, but for now I have no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions. I just maybe a housekeeping issue. The backup material references planning board paperwork that uses the address of two Bedford Street. I'm not sure if they have to make a correction or adjustment on their end, but the, the planning board comments referenced two Bedford Street, not two South Bedford Street. Other than that, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Virginia, have you done this before? Have you sold this before?
Just, I did just some last year. You know, I started this when COVID came about and, you know, it seems to be working well. And I like to pursue this, especially because I don't have contact with anyone.
Have you, did you do it in Burlington?
Yes. Online.
Okay.
Yep, I've been in Burlington for about twelve years now.
Did you get an app, did you get a permit to do that back then?
Uh, no, I did not.
Okay.
Perhaps she was, I don't have an issue, perhaps she was unaware, but, um, we didn't discuss that.
Okay. Um, and are you aware of all the rules now about no cars in the driveway, no signs on the house?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't want somebody else's vehicle in my driveway anyhow.
Yeah, all right, um, hmm, okay, that's all for now, I guess, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Runyon?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this is the second one in recent months for a cla- what is traditionally a Class II license that we've issued over decades to people who own brick and mortar buildings. They pay property taxes in this town, and, and there's, there's a benefit to the, um, community by having these, uh, brick and mortar type facilities. I kind of liken this to, to, like the, the flourish shops in town. They're trying to hear every day, working hard seven days a week, and you get some guy comes in on a, a Mother's Day and opens the doors to his van and sells flowers from the, from the side of the road. I, I, I find this to be no different than, than that scenario. Um, I, I don't see that this applicant has any experience, um, um, no offense, Virginia, but it seemed to have, like going through the application, you don't even have a federal taxpayer ID number, um, you, you seem to have no experience other than a desire to supplement your income. I don't, I, I'm just very uncomfortable with, 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 uh, this application and other online vehicle applications, um, a- a- again, keeping in mind that the, the number of men and women who, who, uh, give back to the community i- i- in, in other ways are, I, I, I think being, uh, um, undermined by us, us issuing these online, um, licenses. I don't, I don't care for them. I know it's probably the, the, the way of the future. You can buy your car in a, in a carousel now or something like that. I guess, I guess I'm just old school, but, um, I, I'm not, uh, I, I'm not leaning towards approval. I, I need to know more about this online stuff. That's all I got for now.
Thank you. Virginia?
Yes.
Would you like?
Yeah, this is strictly, this is strictly wholesale, and, um, and I do give to the community, just, uh, I have a full-time job in addition to this, where I work at Mass General Hospital, and, you know, I have a child in college, and this is something that I've been doing for a little while, which seems to be uh, somewhat, you know, productive, and, um, and the wholesale business do, online works well for me, and, um, you know, it's something I would like to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nick, we're going back to you. Do you have any questions at this point now? Is there a new thing? Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, any, the public hearing, so is there any from the public that would like to comment on this? Do we have anybody, Nick? Do we have anybody, Paul? No? Okay, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing at this point?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I ask? Um, could, could we not close it and continue it, so we have a chance to ask the neighbors in the neighborhood if there's been an issue over the last year, and maybe get some answers for Michael also on this?
Absolutely, we can continue this, yep.
Then I make that motion. Betty, give me a, a date and a time. I want to continue this.
Do you want to do, um, April 12th? At, um, again, 6:30?
Okay, will that give you time to send out something to the neighbors?
The, uh, yes. Yeah, the, the neighbors are aware, they are, were informed, and they got it about a letter, and now we will follow up with this request to, um, to see what their comments are. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
Okay, that's.
Uh, I would also, I'd like to add, add that this is strictly wholesale.
Yes.
You said that, Virginia, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor right now to move this, um, agenda item to April 12th. Uh, I need a second on that, please.
Second.
Mr. Tigges, roll call vote to be moved. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So we're gonna move this to April 12th, and we're gonna get some answers and some questions down, and, uh, we'll go from there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, Mr. Sagarino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next item is a continuation of the board's, um, public hearing on small cell installation at 44 Mall Road, uh, from several weeks ago. Uh, we do have uh, the town's, uh, small cell attorney, Donna Brewer, is here with us, as well as, uh, the town's uh, RF engineer, Dave Maxson, is in the room also, and, uh, attorney Ed Perry is the, uh, petitioner with AT&amp;T.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Um, where do we start? This is, this is a very big issue for everybody in town, which I know, um, there's a lot of questions that were asked at the last meeting. I believe the public hearing is still open, right, Mr. Sagarino?
Correct.
There's, there's, I'm gonna say this before I get into a lot of things. This is, you can't see it, but this is one, two, three, four, five, five pieces of paper on this, on this particular item right now. And I'll be totally honest with you, I've scanned it, I've gone over some of it, there's been emails and questions that's been asked about this. Uh, I know a lot of people still want to speak about this, people want to talk, some people feel like they didn't get enough time the last part. Um, I'm gonna say at the very end of this that we continue this, because I still have to go over a lot of this stuff. That's where I'm gonna leave it at this point. I know, Mr. Tigges, would like to, this is something to say, but there's a lot, lot on the table. So, let me just go from there, and then we'll, we'll move on to, uh, more about the cell towers. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I concur with you as far as, um, uh, continuing it, but I have just a couple of quick questions with regards to the shot clock. How much longer can we continue it before we approach that shot clock? I, I would imagine I'm gonna probably defer that question to Attorney Brewer. Would you have that answer?
Yes, sir. So we have 90 days from the date of the app, receipt of the application to issue our decision.
Okay, that, with that in mind, um, how do we have a date on when the shot clock, when the 90th day is?
So, um, Paul, you can remind us, I think the app, or Betty, the, the application date was January 26th, was it?
I think Betty, Betty had it calculated out to, Betty, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, April 19th or so?
That is correct. What happened was, we originally received the application, and, uh, it keeps that date, and then I requested some more documentation, and we are allowed to reset the clock after that date. And now we are, at the 90 days will be April 19th. And correct me if I'm wrong, um, Attorney Perry and Donna Brewer as well.
So we thi- oh, I'm sorry, is, Mr. Chairman, am I okay to go?
Yes, go ahead.
So theoretically, we could continue this to April 12th without, uh, any shot clock issues, correct, Attorney Brewer?
Correct.
All right, um, Mr. Chairman, just following up on your comment with regards to continuing, I think that would be beneficial to the town in that one, it would maybe, maybe give us some time for legal decisions, uh, with cases that are currently in court, not saying it will, but by extending the, or continuing it, it opens, gives us a window of time to, for a potential legal decision, and two, um, also, we need to, at least the town needs to look at verifying the gap assert, gap in service. Uh, that's probably a whole procedure in itself, but by continuing it, it gives us some time to at least attempt to, um, determine if the gap does exist as stated. Uh, I'll leave it at that, because I know a lot of people want to talk, but that's just my, uh, my comments with regards to continuing it.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let a lot of people talk, but I'm gonna set up some guidelines tonight. Uh, there's a lot of people out there that want to talk. There's a couple of things that, that I found out, in fact, just recently, um, about, um, the health issues, um, and I believe it's a legal issue. So, Donna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, what, what can we as a board discuss about legal issues with this particular cell tower issue?
Uh, so long as we have confirmed through our expert that the FCC, uh, limits on radio frequency emission are satisfied by the equipment in this case, then we have no discretion to do anything further on, uh, radio frequency emissions and health effects.
Okay.
So that was.
Have we done that?
I believe that has been done. Mr. Maxson, do you know?
Uh, yes, I'm muting. Uh, David Maxson with Isotrop, uh, working for the board on this matter. Um, I looked at the new information the applicant submitted, and it, uh, further confirms that, from the public safety perspective, uh, uh, the members of the public on the ground, near, uh, around, and away from the, uh, uh, the pole will not, uh, be exceeding the, the FCC safety limits. Uh, I did raise a concern about the fact that personnel who don't work for AT&amp;T might be servicing the lights on the pole, and AT&amp;T's response includes an appropriate acknowledgement that they would be providing, um, safety training information that the FCC requires for, uh, the, you know, town personnel or contractors who would have occasion to be, for instance, in a bucket truck, working h- higher up on the pole, and they've indicated they also have a, a kill switch, where, uh, a trained person can switch the unit off if they have to work on the upper parts of the pole.
Thank you, Mr. Maxson. Uh, the reason why I asked this question is because I got, I got a few emails on this, on this issue. I'm sure we all did, as, as the board of Selectmen did, uh, and some of it was the fact that, like, okay, if the, if the tower's on the top of the pole or 14 feet up, or whatever it's gonna be, what about the people that are working in the second floor office across from that? Now, are they subject to this? And I thought it was a valid question. I'm looking, I know it was asked, and I know it was answered, but I have, like I said, I have, I don't know, there's gotta be ten, four books of seven, eight, 10 pages each, but I still have to go over it. I'm kind of confused, to be honest with you. Okay, uh, so that's where I am, a bunch of different questions. I know that I am gonna go let people speak now, but what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna limit it to you to three minutes. That's, that's all we can do. There's so many people here right now, this meeting could go on forever. So if you have a question that's new, I believe there's Jennifer out there, I'm sorry, I forget your last name, uh, but I did, you started to say something earlier. I'm gonna let you speak first, because, uh, you're gracious enough to stop and start again. So Jennifer, are you out there?
Yeah, I'm, yes, thank you, and I apologize for interrupting the meeting earlier, uh, because I was confused about the, which topic we were discussing. Um, so yeah, I can definitely limit myself to three minutes. Um, as I mentioned, when I first introduced myself, I'm Jennifer O'Gruden. I'm a, uh, resident of Burlington. I live on Lexington Street. Um, I'm also the Director of Health Physics and Radiation Safety, um, at Leahy Hospital and Medical Center. Um, so I have received questions about this, uh, from friends and, and neighbors, but also from colleagues. Um, at the last meeting, um, it came up that there was the, a part of the discussion that perhaps because stick these cell towers, small cell towers, um, on the Leahy parking garage, um, and so, um, you know, I got a few questions about that from colleagues, asking, is it safe? Um, are they really gonna do this, that sort of thing? So I, I would like that to be clarified, um, if it hasn't already. Uh, and I would also like to just echo the sentiments of the other select board members who spoke, saying that they would like this to be continued, um, you know, even further, and if we can stop that clock. While, um, the health effects of this non-ionizing radiation, they have been studied not extensively enough for my personal liking on, for, for this particular type of of equipment. Um, there is currently a federal lawsuit against the FCC, um, about this, and I'm wondering if that would impact, uh, and again, I'm not a legal person, I'm a physics person, but I don't know if that would, uh, down the line, impact this as a town if we just added some of these installations, and if the safety regulations could change down the line, how would that, how would that affect us as a town, um, if we kind of went forward with this before all these, these safety, uh, measures were possibly changed? Um, so that was really just, uh, I wanted to come on and just, you know, kind of probably request that we, uh, put this off and push it off until further research can be completed, um, and that's coming from me as a resident. I'm, I feel as if, if I wouldn't want one of these installed outside of my window, whether it's at my office at Leahy, or outside of my driveway on Lexington Street, I certainly wouldn't want to impose that upon other people until we had more research done. Again, I know the health effects cannot be disputed legally at this current time, but I'm wondering if that would change uh, after the federal lawsuit with the FCC about the 5G guidelines, uh, goes forward. That was just my request, is if this could be continued at least until the next hearing, um, and see what kind of rights the residents of town do have to speak up and say where these are installed, um, and if there would be education provided for the people within the vicinity of these regarding the potential health effects, um, some of which have not yet been studied. So that was my, uh, personal request. I will say that I did enjoy reading. Um, I know that Mr. Maxson, who's on the line, I read one of the recent papers by your colleagues at your company, um, that was published in the Health Physics Journal, and it was very informative, so I think, uh, we definitely have someone great working for the town as an outside consultant on this matter, so I just wanted to note that as well. But that was all I had to say. I hope I didn't go over my.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, did you, uh, Mr. Maximus, did you get all that? That was quick. Yeah?
I think so, yeah. Uh, just, just a, a quick response. Um, I don't believe we have a, for occupational purposes, uh, a distance, uh, up at the elevation of the antennas, that workers should remain away from the antennas without turning them off. Um, Mr. Hayes is here, he did the report. He can perhaps answer that question, or, um, a follow-up with, with more data on that. The other question that was raised was about, uh, at the, uh, the signal strength at the buildings, uh, which are a substantial distance from the, uh, antennas, and, uh, there would be no, uh, I would have no concern with that, but again, if, if you're looking for calculations for that, if they're not already in the report, uh, I think, you know, Mr. Hayes could be asked, uh, through the applicant to, to do that.
All right, thank you. Um, I see a couple of people to hand up. Ruth, I know you want to speak. I'm gonna go to Mr. Jack Kelly, and then I'll go to you, Ruth. So, Jack, I know you had to hand up.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm trying to recall the, uh, last meeting, and it wasn't clear to me from the applicant whether they were gonna seek any waivers from the policy, the town's established policy. So I wonder if they could tell us if they are gonna seek waivers from our policy, and if so, what are those waivers? That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Um, can, Donna, can you answer that?
Uh, I did not see any waivers in the application. Mr. Paray?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't, I, I don't recall any waivers. I did raise one issue at the last hearing that, uh, there was a question raised. Can you hear me, by the way, just to make sure? Everybody's nodding, thank you. Uh, there was one question raised about whether we could try to maintain the lighting fixture, the luminaire, at the same height as the other lighting fixtures. And I mentioned if we were to do that, we would have to increase the height of the pole, uh, to a total height of 35 feet. The regulations that the town has put forward cap a, uh, standalone pole at 32 feet or 10% higher than poles in the area, so I just did a rough calculation. That would be a maximum 33 feet, so if we do try to elevate the light fixture on our pole and have it function as the wireless facility, we might seek a waiver to go to 35 feet rather than 33 feet. But other than that, I don't believe we sought any waivers. I think we fully comply with the, uh, guidelines and requirements.
Okay, thank you, Edward. Uh, listen, before we move along, I know that, uh, Ruth is up, and then Kristen's gonna be up, so for one second, I just want to say to Edward, thank you so much. I, I got so much information over here, I feel like, uh, I should be a lawyer by the time I get done with all this. No offense. lawyer by the time I get done with all this. No offense to anybody, but there's a lot there. So I want to thank you for answering every question that came in. It's just a matter of me in the rest of the board getting the time to read it all. So Ruth, you have three minutes.
Okay. I'd like to start with three questions for the board. One, does Burlington have a long-term policy on 5G? Is there an upper limit for the number of small cells it would permit to be installed? If no such policy exists, will there be one in 2021? And who will be responsible for drafting it? That's one. The second one, if the town will permit 5G on the roofs of private homes, what criteria will be used to grant those permits? Is there a policy in place to mitigate health and safety concerns? And the third one, prior to making a decision, will the select board take the time to explore the detrimental health effects of 5G? I would encourage everyone from the town involved in this matter to consult the Massachusetts for Safe Technology website, which has a wealth of information on the safety hazards associated with 5G. I would urge the board to deny this application, pending the many lawsuits all over the country, um, that may rule in favor of, of health. The FCC has been challenged by many, um, many states and cities. Also by denying 5G applications, Burlington would be joining many cities and states. For example, Brussels is the first city to have halted 5G due to adverse health effects. New Hampshire has recently passed a law establishing a commission to study the environmental and health effects of 5G, and the city of Eastern Connecticut passed a cease and desist resolution against deploying 5G. Besides caring about this important public issue, I have a personal stake in the matter. The organization I mentioned, Massachusetts for Safe Technology, uh, has many members, myself included, who suffer from electro sensitivity or EHS with immediate symptoms whenever we are in the vicinity of 5G small cells. My PCP at Leahy Clinic is aware of this condition and has seen other patients with similar symptoms. This electro sensitivity is discussed in an article in The Atlantic. The radiation can harm our health physically, immediately, and directly, in addition to its long-term effects such as changes in DNA and cancer. If any of you were to have this condition, I assure you there would be no doubt in your mind that excessive radiation is indeed harmful to the human body. According to The Atlantic article, the number of people suffering from this electro sensitivity is undeniably growing, but it's not just electro sensitive people who are at risk, it's all of us. As a homeowner, I love living in Burlington, but if 5G becomes widely implemented, I fear that I will have to sell my house and move elsewhere. Others may have the same reaction. Does Burlington really wish to become the poster child for people who are fleeing because it has allowed powerful telecom companies to do whatever they wish regardless of the harmful effects on its citizens? And one more comment, Andrew Campanelli, a telecommunications attorney, has stated that if towns deny telecom applications for 5G and the telecom companies sued, the town would not be responsible for the telecom legal fees or damages. Allowing even one 5G antenna into the town will undoubtedly open the floodgates for many more. So again, I urge the board to deny this application, even if the company sues the town.
Thank you, Ruth. Okay, gentlemen, um, Betty, did you get those questions? The three, the questions that she asked there?
I'm sorry, what?
No, I was also talking to Betty McConnaughton, Miss McConnaughton. Um, did you get the questions that she asked?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll get those answered because I really do believe this is gonna be moved off at the next meeting. Um, Christine Russo, you're, you have your hand up for questions. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I, I want to thank you for taking the time to hear our thoughts, both the applicant and the board selectmen, and appreciate your patience as we navigate this. Um, you know, I think because you're the first one to come through the grand location, it, it's more so on you versus if this was our third or our fourth. So I appreciate the patience of the applicant. Um, with that said, I want to remind us, uh, the town that our responsibility by law is not to grant the cheapest build-out for an applicant in order for them to achieve their maximum service goal. Our responsibility of, as the town, is to provide proven need, proven need, with a minimum number of facilities so we avoid and prevent irresponsible redundant coverage placement. We're looking at one antenna, but there are many, 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 many to follow that will adversely affect our town. Local government zoning is our first and only line of defense for residents and the thousands of people who are from Burlington from being exposed to overpopulated wireless infrastructures. I'm not opposed to technology. We have it, we use it. Or installation. What I'm asking for though is that the proven need be done independently. And then if it is proven a need with gap and capacity issue, that the placement of these is minimum number of facilities. So again, we prevent the redundant irresponsible coverage. We hold other industries and companies accountable to testing and standards, and we're not asking anything different with this industry. First, I would like to ask for analytical review of the claims in the application with hard probative evidence, and that's where I think Mr. Maxson might be the person. Um, I have a question, you know, I have questions with regard to the search ring, um, the power and the angles. I know there was brought up, is it a telephone pole as a wireless, um, cell on it, or is it a wireless tower, you know, masquerading as a cell? I, I'm not sure if that got answered in all the papers. I tried to figure that out. It looks like it's going back as a telephone pole was the answer, but again, how, is it just because the applicant said so, or is there something else? So questions such as that I'm concerned about. Um, I still have a question with regard to map three and four. They were resubmitted, so I believe I was looking at the new maps. And I'll see if I can explain it, um, correctly. But if you look at map three with the existing coverage now, um, there's no purple. So you have the little mall road location and there's, there's, you know, some colors there, but there's no purple. But then when you look at map four, and this is now with the proposed, um, cell put in place, now purple pops up on the fringes. And to me, I don't understand that and if that could be answered because it looks like if we put in this cell site, we're now, I don't know, going drawaway and then we're going to not have any coverage in those purple spots. So now we have to put cells on either side of those. So I guess the RF engineers, if they could explain, are we setting ourselves up to bring in more cells to cover these now purple areas by putting in? And I don't know if I'm explaining my question right, but I'm just confused on how we don't have purple and then we put in the cell and now that area on the fringes goes to purple, which is the lowest. Um, so if I may explain that, Mr. Chair, I'll, I can try a better way. Um, and then, um, sorry, I just lost my thing. Um, so again, you know, the small, small cell is the first of many companies to come across, and I'm sure there'll be more for AT&amp;T. I think it's the due diligence of the board and the town to, to look at this more thoroughly, get the answers, see if it's proven need, data, capacity, the search ring, all of that. Um, and in the words of B. Blake Levitt, "It often takes decades for public policy to catch up with scientific research. We need to err on the side of caution as best we can in writing our zoning bylaws." And I appreciate Ms. Brewers doing that for us. This is the one real handle we actually have. And we can see how this technology is constantly changing faster than anything we've ever experienced. So let's keep, keep not having to put forth redundant wireless as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Christine, sorry.
Uh, Kristen, yep.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I don't see anybody else's hand up right now. So what, what I really like to do is this. This is what I'd really like to do, and I don't know if it's possible or not. This is such a high level questions, answers, so many things going on. I would actually consider seeing if the board of selectmen would like to have a special meeting strictly on this. Whether it be a Tuesday night, or Wednesday night, or Thursday night, or whatever night, besides a Monday night, we do our regular agenda, and then we get everything answered, and we can come up to a decision at this point. Sometime before the 12th, or after the 12th, or the 13th, or whatever it may be. We have the time to do this. We have until, I believe you said the 19th. Mr. Sagarino, is that possible, or is this something we just want to do now? Because there's been a lot more questions to be asked and a lot more answers to come in. Every time we have a meeting, there's more questions than answers back and forth.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, you certainly could, uh, arrange a special meeting, uh, just for this installation, uh, without question, but I would, uh, set that date relatively soon, uh, as we are under a short clock there. So in the event that we do need additional meetings after that, we'll still have time for it. So I wouldn't push it off too far into the future if you, if you choose to do so.
I would like to see Mr. Teeger. So any comment on that at all?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we actually did that when we, uh, first started the discussion on, on small cell and small wireless facilities, as we had a special selectmen's meeting with regards to the process itself. This next special meeting would be with, would be location specific. But I do have a question I wanted to ask Mr. Maxson, if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Maxson, one thing that keeps cropping up is the question of whether there's a, a gap in service in that area. And my question is, are, are you or are there other people out there that the town could, um, turn to, to try and validate that gap in
Uh, I'm your person. Uh, and, and, uh, yeah, my, my role here is to help, uh, the board communicate with the applicant so that the applicant can supply information that helps the board decide that it has substantial evidence in the record on which to base its decision. That's kind of complicated and convoluted, but basically, um, I, I can do all the calculations I want, and I do do that when I'm validating somebody else's calculations. So my role here is to kind of look for ways to get the, the, the town and the applicant communicating in a way that they can understand each other. Um, with respect to a gap in coverage, um, you can see on the map there is coverage, and what the applicant's talking about is capacity, and that's, uh, more difficult to, um, uh, prove in a forum like this, because you can't just show a capacity map. It, it doesn't quite work that way. Um, uh, but applicants, uh, the, the wireless companies have data that they use to evaluate the traffic, the, the, the data and phone call traffic and messaging traffic on their cell sites that tell them that cell site X, uh, sector B, pointed in a particular direction, gets overwhelmed during rush hour, or, you know, whatever it might be, or it's trending towards getting overwhelmed, and they want to be ahead of the trend and get some new co- coverage in. Uh, when you come to small cells, you're now making, they're making inferences using whatever tools they have available to them that there is a concentration of demand that's affecting that cell site, uh, at a particular location, whether it's an intersection, a busy highway that gets, uh, traffic gets slowed, and people are using their applications and their cars are using applications and, or whether they're near a, a busy, a building, office building, or a medical building, or, or, uh, retail area. Um, and so they make inferences based on whatever data they have that this is a location where they want to, uh, relieve a burdened cell site of its capacity burden in order to make that cell site more useful to everybody else and to, uh, give some additional capacity to this particular location. So, uh, you know, we can ask the applicant if there's anything in that regard that, that they can provide. All I can do looking at the coverage maps is infer that, uh, I was just looking at, uh, at maps three and four that, uh, Ms. Russo was pointing out. Um, it, it's, it's located in an area that's of high connectivity, moderate data rates, moderate to low data rates, uh, the, the orange and the, and the light blue, um, which you would think that that's, that's just fine. But I think we're all familiar with, uh, some of the traffic patterns, vehi- vehicular traffic patterns, and the presence of, you know, some, some buildings that a lot of people occupy that the applicant might be trying to address. Um, and so we could, we could turn that question to them and see what kind of data they might be able to provide to show that capacity crunch. The other thing, if I'm just, uh, looking at that map now, I think Ms. Russo's question was that when you look at map four, there are additional purple spots of poor connectivity that weren't there in map three, and map four shows the addition of the, uh, the small cell. And I think that's because of the way the map was made. I see this sometimes, that the mapmakers do their small cells on a different layer than their macro cells. So the areas of poor coverage of the small cell, uh, are, are overlaid on top of existing areas of perfectly fine coverage of the macro cell. So that's a, uh, I think just a, uh, just a, an artifact of the way they're doing the mapping. The most important thing is that comparing the, the fact that, uh, the small cell puts a, a, a very small green footprint, uh, near that, uh, intersection and, uh, to the adjacent, uh, buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, one quick follow-up?
Yep.
Okay, what I'm gonna request then is, prior to the next meeting, whenever that may be, uh, request that the applicant provide, or the, the proof, or I should say, provide the data for lack of capacity, uh, request that Mr. Maxson either confirm or deny that, that lack of, and then request the applicant provide us with updated maps that are clear with no artifacts. But most importantly, whatever night we make the meeting, make sure Attorney Brewer is present.
Okay.
That's it. I'll stop right there.
Okay. So before I get to Mr.-
Mr. Chairman?
Before I get to you, I, two more things I would like to do, and then I'm gonna get to you because I have to thank you for everything you've done so far. You've been outstanding with this. Uh, Mr. Priest, any questions from you at this point?
Not at this point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan, any questions from you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just heard something that jumped out at me. Uh, we've been talking about small cells here, and, um, what's a, what's a macro cell, and why are we bringing that into the conversation?
Uh, hi, this is David. I, I apologize for using a, a, a term of art. Uh, if, a, a traditional cell site on top of a building or on a tower is referred to as a macro cell because it tends to have a coverage area that's large, that's, uh, uh, and is sort of the reference for everything that's smaller related to it. So it might have a radius of a, anywhere from a half mile to two miles, depending on the terrain and the, uh, usage and that sort of thing. So when I talk about the macro cells, that's what the existing coverage is that's showing on map three. And then you add on top of that an overlay showing what the coverage of the, um, small cell would be. And that's how we get those two layers of, um, colors on the map four.
Do we have any macro cells in Burlington right now?
All the, uh, cell towers and building rooftops that might be occupied. I'll leave that to the applicant to, uh, explain.
Okay. All right, that's it for now, I guess. We'll have a long, sure.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wernig-
If there's already service, then what are, what are we spending all this time on, on small cells for?
Capacity.
So the small cells give more capacity than the macro cells? So the small cells give more capacity than the macro cells?
Well, yeah, the idea is that the small cell, um, serves a cluster of users in a small area, and those users no longer have to place demands for their data and voice calls on the macro cell, on the cell site, on the tower, which might be a mile away, allowing, enabling that cell tower to have better communications with the remainder of the population and the traffic that, that it serves.
But, but they don't have to come to us for macro permits?
Well, it's already built. The, the macro cell is already built.
Okay. That's all.
Also, Mr. Runyon, any questions?
Uh, no questions, Joe, but I, I think the, uh, the idea of a special meeting, and, um, i- if possible, uh, any further questions, um, try as best we can to get submitted in advance, but I would be in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Now, before we go any further, Mr. Pae, I just wanted to thank you for giving me all this paperwork to read. A lot of questions were answered. I didn't have anything to do this weekend anyway, uh, but no, thank you, seriously. You've done a great job with this. It really worked, uh, trying to answer all the residents' questions. Uh, I don't know where it's gonna go at this point, but, uh, some questions have been answered. Ms. Brewer's done a great job on her end, so I haven't given you a chance to speak, so go ahead and any questions that you heard that you can answer right away, be great. Any questions, uh, that you might have on your own from us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just for the record, Edward Paree, P-A-R-E, I'm attorney of Brown Rudnick, and I am outside counsel to AT&amp;T. Yeah, so a couple of things. First of all, the, as we said at the first hearing, and as provided in our coverage maps, in the first map, we have five macro sites. So they're a combination of water tank, rooftops, uh, existing towers, wherever they are around town, but we don't have anything, you know, in particular on Burlington Mall Road, as I noted in my response to the, to the questions. Uh, you know, we've provided two reports showing that we comply with the FCC standards with respect to the exposure to emissions. I do have Don Hayes here, and we can certainly have him come to a continued hearing. But, yeah, the maximum exposure that's calculated for this installation is a little over 10% of the allowable maximum, which already is conservative if you take a look at his report. So I don't want to dwell on, you know, those things in particular, but I, I'm a little confused about the questions as to why we would build this if we didn't need it. I hear comments about redundant coverage, you know, capacity. Yeah, I can't imagine that a corporation would invest capital, expense, and go through this process if they don't, if it's redundant and we don't need it. So, you know, these areas are targeted for a reason, and I agree, you are gonna see more. Uh, you're gonna see more in Burlington, you're gonna see more throughout Massachusetts and the United States. This is your first. Uh, we've probably permitted or installed, you know, three or four hundred of these in Massachusetts already. So it, I've personally done, you know, dozens in communities, uh, already. I mean, they're more, you know, densely populated, which is what drives it. It's, it's, it's all of these consumers are driving the demand, so it's not, you know, AT&amp;T saying, well, let's go invest and spend money on building something to aggravate people. This is what the consumer's telling us they want. They want high speeds, they want their devices to work, they want them to work fast. And we all know we get frustrated if you can't make a call, or if you try to search something and your, you know, device starts spinning, because, you know, you can't get adequate coverage to download whatever it is you're gonna download. With that said, I do want to, I do have AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineer here. I do want him to address a couple of the issues with respect to capacity and the coverage plots that was raised by, I'm not sure of the Christian, I think, uh, with respect to how the colors change and, you know, based on what Mr. Maxon said to Kevin, if you could, uh, I don't know if he needs to be unmuted, but this is Kevin Brewer, B-R-E-U-E-R. He's AT&amp;T's, uh, design engineer for, you know, this installation, uh, and if he could either be unmuted, or Kevin, if you're out there, if you could, uh, weigh in on those two issues, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, on the, on the coverage, you know, Mr. Maxon had it, had it pretty close to how it's done, but it's not an overlay. The, the closer we are to a cell site, we calculate the details at a finer, um, bend size, so, uh, you know, uh, so that we, we get a, a pointed data, um, every five meters for maybe like, uh, I think it's a sixth of a mile. After that, it increases to 35 meters. The macro site that's providing the pre-coverage, the, the pre-plot, that's at somewhere around 50 meters. So when our propagation tools, you know, uh, merge the different levels, it takes the five meter, then the 35 meter, then the 50 meter. So I could correct the map, but you would actually show less detail around the intended coverage area, because it would not be as fine of a bend size.
This is David Maxon. I got that. Um, it makes sense. Uh, it, it would require a lot more explaining, but, yeah, it, it's, it's a, a rational explanation for why, uh, there's more purple, uh, in the second, uh, map, um, because they've, they've gone to a higher precision, higher level of detail around where the, uh, uh, the small cell is. So I don't, I, I, I agree. I don't think that needs to be, really no benefit in redoing that, so it looks different, because it, it, it won't add anything to the conversation.
Hey Kevin, could you also talk about just the capacity need in the area and along Burlington Mall Road?
Yeah, so, you know, pre-COVID, Burlington Mall Road and, and Burlington Mall was a huge, uh, draw for people. Leahy Clinic itself is a huge draw for people. Um, so when we look at our, our plots where traffic originates from, um, Leahy Clinic produces a lot of, a lot of users that have a lot of data demand. Data traffic, um, really taxes out our macro sites. The further we are away from that macro site, and the more interference that is between the user and the site, the more capacity is actually wasted from the site trying to serve that, that data, uh, those customers. So by putting this small cell at the source of where the traffic is, we get a very clean signal to those users, and we free up the macro cell for, you know, a good, good area, um, of Burlington will now see maybe improved speeds, uh, but definitely more capacity for future uses. Um, data traffic's been increasing, you know, multiple times, or multiple times a year. Uh, it's been doubling. So the, the, the demand is always continuing. It's always increasing, um, and we're always trying to, to plan for that traffic. Small cells is a way for us to do it without introducing a large amount of sites to, uh, a large amount of macro sites to an area. So they're very pinpointed. They have very small coverage radiuses, um, and they're meant to, to handle the traffic at particular points in the network. Where macro site's more like a, it's like a, you know, more like a broadcast over a large area we try to cover. So.
Thank you, Kevin. And, uh, I think there was one question about whether this board sees or approves these macro sites. Uh, that, that actually rests with your planning board. Uh, so any wireless facilities that are on private properties, uh, and I mentioned one in my letter where we tried to do a small cell on a private property utility pole. Those are done through a special permit process under the zoning bylaw, and the special permit granting authority is the planning board. So you don't you have not seen the macro sites unless you have to be a member of the planning board, uh, back when they were approved.
Thank you. Yes, James, go right ahead. You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm a member of the public, maybe chiming in later. I'm a registered nurse, or a retired registered nurse, 45 years in RN in Massachusetts. I do have concerns. Um, I'm not concerned about the coverage here so much as the safety concerns, which, been talking about the FCC meeting their regulations. Actually, the last time the FCC did a safety test on, on, um, cell phones was 1996. That's 25 years ago, and we had 2G. We have many, um, peer-reviewed papers now, which, uh, show that, um, cellphone radiation at 4G, uh, causes cancer, heart irregularities, lowered sperm counts, uh, DNA damage. 5G is much stronger. You know, it's two watts with a, um, a, a 4G cell's gonna be 20, 10 times that much with a 5G, um, cellphone. Uh, uh, that's cell phones, but we're also, they're, they're two-way, and the, uh, the small cells are gonna be a lot stronger, uh, in, uh, in, in, in the power that they deliver. I know that, um, Senator Richard Blumenthal of Connecticut, yeah, there's a viral video, you can find it very easily on YouTube, uh, asked members of the telecommunications industry if they had done any safety testing on 5G, and they sat there in silence and smirked, and finally admitted they had not done any tests whatsoever. I can tell you, as a registered nurse, I had a patient who had a, a brain tumor he died of at the age of 24 from carrying his cellphone. He had worked on the big dig. Senator Ted Kennedy, uh, was right-handed. He died from, uh, uh, tumors here, and John McCain, who was left-handed, died from cell tumors here. Um, I am very concerned about the safety, not so much the coverage. You know, my home is hardwired. We use Ethernet. I, I mean, and, uh, it, it, it's safe, and it's fast. I can download a movie in one second, and I'd like to see emphasis on hardwiring. Even if that might be a little more, more expensive, I'd rather have an expense in terms of money than in health. That's my comment, and I'm very glad that you're continuing this, uh, hearing, uh, because I think it needs, uh, further investigation, because I think that the safety of our Burlington citizens should be put first.
Thank you, James.
Joe, mute.
Thank you. I had a great speech. You missed it. I forget what I said.
I did.
I think that, I really do believe that we need a special meeting on this. Uh, I think, um, we'd have to have Donna, uh, Brewer with us, because that's, that's our key component right now for myself and I think the rest of the board. Uh, Mr. Sagarino, any thoughts on that, on how?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would also try to make sure that, uh, Mr. Maxon is available as well.
Absolutely. Sorry about that.
Thank you. You stole my word.
And, 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 uh, yes, absolutely. Gentlemen, any thoughts on that from the board? Please raise your hand, just the board members. Uh, I'll, I'll just ask, Mr. Priest, what do you think?
I have a lot of thoughts, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I'll, I'll reserve them for the special meeting.
Okay, no, 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 the, the thoughts are, should we have one special meeting for this?
Oh, yes, I, I agree. I think that we should have a special meeting. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Runyon?
Yes, I'm gonna agree.
Mr. Tegus?
Yes, I do. I agree.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the only reason I, I even bring it up is because there's a million questions to be asked, and I think we can get this done before the, the, the 90-day, uh, period is over with. So we have a selectmen's meeting on, I believe it's the 12th, and I think if we go the 14th, that's, uh, two days after that, I think that will give us time to review this and go over it again. Uh, I hate to put everybody on the spot to keep making this go further and further, but what it, what it, it's not what it does need to do. That's it. Um, so Donna, would you be available on the 14th? Uh, Mr. Maxon, would you be available? Mr. Pae? Yeah? Or are you?
Uh, yes, I probably won't be on video, but yeah, I should be available.
Okay. All right, so at this point, um, Paul, I believe I, I need a motion to do that, right?
Uh, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, a motion to continue the hearing to a, a specific date and a specific time.
Okay. Gentlemen, I, I believe it's Chairman, I can't make that motion.
I'm happy to make the motion. Should we, uh, set it for 6:00 PM on that day?
Uh, I believe that's a Thursday. No, it's a Monday would be
Wednesday.
Wednesday. I might be a little bit late. So if you want to do it for 12, I might, I mean, for, uh, 6, I may be there a little bit late for that. So
Would be better for
6:30, 6:30 would be fantastic.
Okay, then I, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we move, um, this, uh, we, we continue this, this public hearing for small cell conversation to April 14th, uh, at 6:30, uh, PM.
I have a second on that.
Second.
Well, I'm seconded. Okay. Gentlemen, need a roll call vote right now. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tegus?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes. So once again, I just want to thank everybody for their input. Uh, it's really enlightening for me, I can tell you that. Uh, a lot of stuff has been said tonight, a lot of questions have been asked. Ms. Russo's asked quite a few great questions, Ruth, uh, but I'm gonna say this before we move on. At the next meeting, it will be questions only. That's all we're going to do. We're not gonna hear statements about anything else. I, I appreciate them all. I think they're all wonderful, but it's, let's get down to statements, let's ask, it's down to questions, strictly questions, so that we can understand what's going on. Okay? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I just ask a procedural question before?
Yep, go right ahead, sir.
It's Ed, Ed Perry? So I, I know there was some question, there were a lot of comments this evening. There were some questions. We answered some of them. Uh, is Betty gonna set, I mean, it would be helpful, since we're so far out with the next, with the next hearing, to get a list of questions that we can be responsive to, like we did the last round, and the more time I have, the more time we have, you know. So, you know, I don't want to re-answer things that I've already answered, but if, if there are things that the board wants, if they can let me know within the next week or so, I'll get a response out, you know, within a week, and you can have, you'll know what's coming.
Okay, fantastic. So Betty, what we'll do is, if the board, if the board has questions, we'll send the questions to Betty, and she can send them off to Ms. Pae, and then if there's any new questions, is what I should say. Any new questions that people haven't asked yet. There's a lot of them. A lot of them have, have been answered. Uh, we'll go from there. If you receive a question that, that you've already answered, just write on the paper. I've answered this question, instead of answering it twice. I'm just referencing it somehow, okay? Trying to make your job a little bit easier. Yes, Mr. Priest?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, I guess, point of information, or order, whichever one fits some of the best. You know, should we set a date for also anyone who wants to submit a question, say, you know, from today's date, a week, have all your questions into Betty, so that way, you know, everyone has ample time to answer the questions ahead of the meeting? I'd hate to have your questions, you know, a day or two before, and, you know, it has to go to an engineer or somebody for answers, you know, and, and we don't have the information. It's just gonna drag this out.
I would say Friday.
If you can get them by Wednesday, it'd be great, just to give Attorney Perry enough time to contact out his people.
All right, thank you. Did, uh, people hear that? Everyone are out there listening right now, Wednesday? I'm, I'm sure you had your questions already in your head, just haven't had a chance to ask them yet. Okay? Okay, so we're gonna move on till the, the 14th. Uh, we'll see you all then.
Great. See you then.
We'll see you all then. Yes, we will. Okay. Paul, back to you, my friend.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next agenda item is a continued public hearing on the board's, uh, alcohol policy.
Okay, um, as you remember, we brought this up last time about, uh, the alcohol. So Paul, we'll start with you, senior on the board, on the, uh, second committee with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've all been kind of having these questions bandied around, trying to make the system here in Burlington, um, more, more workable, um, when it comes to uh, spreading out the kind of restaurants we have, uh, with the numbers that we have right now. With the numbers that we have right now, we're kind of locked into only having chains, franchises, and not having any opportunities for small, smaller mom-and-pop type situations. I use that term only because when I say mom-and-pop, it's a smaller, more personal restaurant. And the question becomes, how do we do that? Do we want to have, right now, a full alcohol license has to be a hundred and twenty seats at a minimum and for beer and wine, forty. Do we want to lower those to what we think might be workable numbers? And if so, why did we pick those numbers? Do we want to bring it down to zero and just deal with each application as it comes to us? And then, and then ask the questions as to what does that mean for people who have licenses now? Does there become any legal issues for us that we might have to address also? So those are the kinds of things that we're kind of throwing out there to the board or anybody else to try to help. We've got this center, this district down, down the bottom of the hill, so to speak, from town hall. No one's requested a single license because it, no one appears to want to put a large franchise kind of a restaurant down there. So we've got these licenses just sitting there in an area that might be able to use it if we were able to work with them and come up with lower numbers. So, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of the beginning of the conversation and wherever other people want to jump in.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Runyon.
Well, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think this is a, I think it's a great idea for us to take a look at it. I'm all for trying to attract smaller type of tenants down the center of town. It's been, it's been talked about for quite some time. And I think lowering the threshold, you know, would certainly bear some results. I don't know necessarily that zero is a good number for us to start with, but I'd be, I'd certainly be amenable to at least cutting those numbers in half, maybe a little bit more. Just something for, just something as a starting point anyway. But I'm certainly in favor. I think it's a great idea and, you know, hopefully we can act on this and get, find that number relatively soon.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges, you have your hand up?
I do, Mr. Chairman. So I concur that this definitely has to be looked at. And so what if that, we looked at the back material, saw what other towns have, and then when you combine that information with what towns around us are doing with the fact that we want to attract these so-called mom-and-pop, mom-and-pop restaurants, look at what's available physically out there, and we'll use the building nineteen site, shops at Simon's Park as an example. But when you think of the size of the buildings, what towns around us are doing, the effort we want to make attracting non-chain businesses, I'm going to go on a limb and start the discussion with a number because I think as far as beer and wine, very few towns around us have any minimum. So my thought, and again, it's just throwing this out there so we can start the discussion, would be to have zero for the beer and wine. And again, looking at the physical capacity, type of business, and what's around us, I came up with the number thirty in my head for all alcohol license. So maybe we'll start there, work one way or the other, have the discussion. But what I'm offering is, you know, zero, you don't need a minimum, I should say, you don't need zero. You don't need a minimum for the beer and wine and you need a minimum of thirty, a capacity of thirty for the all-alcohol license. And I'll leave it at that and let the rest of the board, you know, put their two cents worth in.
Thank you, Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm glad that we're looking at this. I think that, you know, in an effort to, you know, diversify, you know, the opportunity for smaller owners, business owners to, you know, make Burlington their home, you know, this would be a good, a good effort on our part to help. I know that, you know, this board frequently talks about ways with, you know, looking at the folks around us, I was actually surprised to see Wilburn at a hundred for all alcohol and fifty for wines and malt. I figured it would have been less. But, yeah, I was thinking around the same idea as Slippin' and Runyon. If we more or less halved what we have, so it'd be fifty for all alcohol and twenty-five for wines and malt to start. And then, you know, I guess reevaluate from there. I have to assume, you know, to turn a profit, they're going to need bodies in there anyways. So, you know, by calling zero, like, it's not like we're doing anybody any huge favor, I don't think. I don't want to cut my nose off to spite my face. But maybe somewhere in that range, you know, and then reevaluate in a year's time to see if things are improving or staying the same if we didn't make any adjustments. You know, it should be fairly easy enough, I think, at that point. But again, open to further discussion. Thank you.
I have another question if you get a chance.
Yes, go right ahead.
Have we consulted with our economic development director to see if she has thoughts or if she has connections in other towns?
She supports the idea, but she didn't come up with a number that I'm aware of.
That was all.
So my thought was that, you know, when I think Mr. Hogan and myself started this program, I thought I'd come up with this meeting. We would actually get a vote on this tonight, but apparently I don't think we're going to be close to that because that's why I brought it up at the last meeting. I was hoping we could vote on this tonight. But it doesn't seem like we're, we're close. I mean, Jimmy's got forty, Nick got fifty and twenty-five. Mike, I don't know if you have an actual number in your head at all. Bob has a couple other questions. So we're probably just going to have to table this in the next meeting and go from there. I don't personally have a number in my head. I could be open to thirty, I could be open to twenty-five. I think that the rule we have now is crazy. We're never going to be able to have a small restaurant down the center of town or at nineteen and a half or anyplace else in town. That's going to be a small family-owned and operated place or some guy wants to go in and open up an Irish pub or an Italian place. I don't think that those numbers are consistent enough. I think a hundred and fifty-seat capacity for a full alcohol license is crazy. I think if we have down the center of town, if we went with forty, that's a compromise between the two of them. I think forty for a full alcohol license and twenty-five. Yes, Mr. Priest, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, not to derail your thought there. I was just, I wanted to say that, you know, if, if other members of the board are amenable to it, I'd be willing to make a motion for forty-twenty and go from there, you know, in an effort to get this passed so that we can, you know, get the policy moving forward and not delay this a whole other meeting unless there are questions that Slippin' Hogan had that would, you know, otherwise be, you know, weren't holding it up. But, you know, just want you to keep the conversation.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, we're not dealing with this evening specifically, but we do have an application that is, has come to us. And I'm sitting here drawing a blank on even what their seating issue is as far as numbers. And I wouldn't want us to come up with a number tonight that's going to be in conflict with what they're trying to do. I'm talking about Excal.
The seating's fifty-three.
Okay. But, but we, we're only like two weeks. I don't think there's anything in the pipeline that's going to cause us to have a problem if we just have a, you know, a discussion tonight and then at the next meeting come up with a, oh, if anybody has questions, we can ask them and see if we can get the answers and do it all at the next, at the next meeting. And I don't think coming up with a number is going to be hard. We could all accommodate each other. But, you know, I think having the conversation first in case there are people out there who want to sign in at the next, at the next meeting also. Sorry, Nick.
No bother. Mr. Runyon, any comments?
Well, Joe, I'm just wondering, just wondering if there's anybody out there in the public and who's on with us tonight if they want to share any thoughts with us. Otherwise, I'm fine with waiting to the next session.
Anybody out there?
We have, we have someone from Excal if you want, if you're interested.
Go ahead. Who is it?
Mark Vaughn.
Oh, Mark Vaughn's here? Okay, great. Mark, go right ahead.
Well, I didn't anticipate having a speaking or appearance role here, but I, oh, I'm just here monitoring the conversation, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, as you know, we are, you know, working with someone that is desirous of locating in Burlington that, you know, does have seating that would not necessarily fall within the current minimum that you have. And I, you know, I think for a variety of, you know, I don't disagree with what anyone is saying in terms of trying to, you know, diversify and provide an opportunity to maybe encourage some other forms of restaurants and entertainment establishments like that that, you know, might not, you know, be able to, you know, satisfy those current minimums that you have. But nonetheless, can help to fill a important, you know, void in the, in the community in terms of encouraging some diversity and some additional locations for people to be able to enjoy. So I don't want to insert myself in terms of what that, that number is, but I'm here more listening and, you know, just to let you know that, you know, I think there very well could be businesses that are interested in following your lead to be able to locate in Burlington itself.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Quick question from me to you, Mr. Vaughn. Was I right on the number fifty-three?
Yeah, there's a fifty-three is what they have, correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore, did you have your hand up or were you just waving your white?
I was just, I was just about to send a chat. I think this is a, I think this is absolutely the right way to go here. You certainly have my most, my full support as a member of Burlington community. I think that if we can be flexible and, you know, have that ability to modify the minimums, I think the ability to attract those types of mom-and-pop places and get away from the chains, get away from the bigger establishments, I think it's absolutely the way, the right way to go. And kudos to Bob and the economic development and the rest of you folks for bringing this up. I would fully support it. So let's keep moving forward with this and keep it on, you know, keep it, keep it as a topic going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you very much. All right, so it looks at this point, gentlemen, we're going to be moving this. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, Sally Willard has her hand up.
Okay. Go ahead, Sally. How are you?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for bringing this forward. I'm not sure why, why we would be talking about a liquor license for, for a restaurant that might have seating for fifty or sixty people in the center of town when parking is so limited. I mean, unless we're going to, you know, put it in someplace like Shaw's where there's plenty of parking. So I think that that's something that you have to consider, especially when you're talking about the center of town. And I certainly welcome whatever Melissa would bring forward to this conversation. I think that simply to kind of auction off or, or put out liquor licenses for restaurants of any size, I think that one of the most important things that you have to consider is, is there any available parking? Because if there's no parking, then if there's not enough parking for fifty patrons, then to, to say, oh, well, we should have this, I think that that's kind of nonsensical. But that's, of course, just my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Sally, how are you? The reason is, the vote was taken to create this center and then a number of licenses was requested for, from the state, for just this area. So right now, those licenses say a minimum of a hundred and twenty seats. Well, that's not working, so we need to bring it down to a number that, you know, people can live with as far as the size of the restaurant and, and, yes, the accommodations as far as the building and the parking. So we're trying to bring the number down for this area because right now, the license says a hundred and twenty. So we're just trying to accommodate a smaller number for this particular area so we can maybe generate some interest in a restaurant that might be available to come out and then work with planning and coming up with the right combination of building size and parking and accommodations like that, that someone can afford to put a smaller restaurant and still make some money.
Go ahead, Sally.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, there is a restaurant, at least one restaurant in the center of town with a, that has a liquor license. And do they have a capacity of a hundred? Or whatever the current minimum is?
Which license is that, Sally? I'm sorry, I.
Does the town, does the restaurant that's currently in the center of town have the, currently meet the minimum capacity for a liquor license?
Well, there's a couple that have beer and wine, but not a full alcohol. So they would only need forty.
Okay, and the beer and wine minimum is?
Forty.
Forty?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, it just, you know, it seems to me that, that we have to have a plan. And, you know, if the used book superstore is going away and we're going to have restaurants in there, then there's reasonable parking. And I think that you can't just look at liquor licenses kind of in a void without considering how much parking there is available to, to the patrons.
Mr. Chairman, if I may talk with Sally directly.
Absolutely.
The center also involves the shops at Simon's Park. So if there was a restaurant up there that's seated forty or fifty people for an all-alcohol, there appears to be parking available in that area. So, yes, it still has to be addressed and there is a plan that's not formalized or, you know, locked in stone. But we've got these licenses we can't do anything with because the minimum is too large. So we want to see if we can lower that to a number that may get the attention of some people.
Okay, so I, yes, I understand now because that is a, it's a good place to have a restaurant. And there's obviously, at the moment, at least plenty of parking available. Thank you.
You know, if we had, if we had started this sooner, Sally, you know, maybe we would have had a restaurant down next to Shaw's. That might have worked well because there's a lot of parking down there.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Mr. Priest.
So like Bob said, we're just trying to bring the number down to maybe, maybe entice someone to open up a small restaurant or a small family-operated place. That's, if we bring the number down, we may bring somebody in. And then the planning board and everything else has to come into effect with the parking and so on and design and all that kind of stuff. So it's just an opportunity to, to bring somebody in, hopefully.
Right, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And when, when Mr. Vaughn mentioned, I think he said the word Carabas, I can't imagine that there, I mean, that that size restaurant would fit in the town center. But then that's, of course, just my view of, of the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen, so I'm assuming that we're going to move this to April twelfth.
In the time?
Mr. Priest?
All right, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, just before we make the motion to continue this, if through you to Betty, we could ask if Melissa? this, um, if, if through you to Betty, we could ask if, uh, Melissa and Kristen Kazner would be available to, to attend the next, uh, scheduled meeting, just to, to talk on the economic development and planning, uh, portions of this from a, from a high level, you know, strategic picture, um, just to, you know, help kind of fill the whole, the whole picture out for us.
Thank you, Anthony. And, and through the chair, I'd be pleased to read Melissa's comments, if you'd like.
Sure.
She does not recommend, she does not comment on the number of parking, but she fully supports this, and this would allow flexibility and creativity from the business community as it relates to addressing shifts in the market preference that are leaning to mixed-use elements such as entertainment, food, or cafes, et cetera.
Great, great. Thank you. Um, any, but if she could still join us, that would be good, I think, yeah. Thank you. All right. Uh, gentlemen, I'll need a motion to, uh, move this or continue.
I would make the motion for the date, but what about the time? Betty, which, what time would we have the, the hearing?
You just need to allow forty-eight hours to get it down to the, um, town clerk's office, the announcement. So you can pick any date you want, gentlemen.
Yeah, but if we picked April twelfth, what, what, what time?
Seven o'clock.
Um, it's seven o'clock is five, six, uh, six forty-five, six forty-five.
All right. Six forty-five.
And I would make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this hearing until April twelfth at six forty-five.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
All right, gentlemen, you ready? Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy, yes. We're all in favor. And we'll be back on the twelfth. Okay, uh, the next one, Mr. Sagrino is, uh, go ahead. Budgets.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we don't have any additional, uh, budgets to present to the board this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so we're off on that one. We'll move to the next one. Uh, the next one, I am going to vote with, uh, the, it's the town administrator's contract. So Paul, we're gonna leave you out of this for this, for a minute or two. Uh, gentlemen, I think we all received the, uh, his current contract, uh, to renew it for another three years. Uh, I'd like to renew it for ten, but he said no way. Uh, he didn't know if it'd be around that long. Uh, so we'll start with the, uh, Mr. Tigges, you sat there with me. Uh, we discussed this contract, and there's a few things that I think people need to know. So I'm gonna start with you, and I'll get into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, without getting into the specifics of the contract right off the bat, I just want to mention that, you know, uh, Mr. Sagrino came to us from a, an accounting background, obviously a town accountant. And then he was quickly thrown into managing a town that was in the middle of a pandemic. So, we had someone who had the financial background, backing, you know, and, and all of a sudden, the town and, as town administrator, Mr. Sagrino, had to come up with a way or, or run this town or, or make decisions that benefited the town and the residents in unprecedented times. And we all did our evaluation of him, and because of his leadership, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Chairman, but I believe that we both agree that Mr. Sagrino definitely deserves an extension on his contract. Um, he's done a fantastic job. He's done, you know, been a true leader. Um, I don't know if you want me to get into the specifics with regards to numbers. Is that what you wanted me to do, or?
Well, that'll become, that will become public information.
Okay.
You've done, you've done, uh, good with that part of there. So I'm just gonna just run with something quick, um, and then I'll get right back to Jimmy. Um, so, uh, about five months ago, I asked Mr. Denizio to send all of selectmen a survey on Paul. We sent it out, and it came back that it was, uh, he basically got all four and a halves on a, on a five schedule, you know what I mean? So he did very, very well from everybody. Then myself and Mr. Tigges sat down, and we discussed, uh, uh, the pay, the steps that he gets involved, uh, the money that he's gonna make, and we were very happy with what we sat down with to discuss. Now, on a quick side note, Mr. Denizio is, I mean, Mr. Denizio, Mr. Sagrino, uh, isn't gonna take a, a pay raise this year, uh, in regards to the town of Burlington being in the pandemic that we're in right now. He foregoes, uh, his pay raise for this year, which I think is absolutely incredible. Uh, he will work it out later on, uh, but for this year, where we're, we're in the pandemic that we're in, I think we all understand that we're trying to cut budgets everywhere. So he said he would not do it. We've moved a couple of things around for him. Uh, I believe he's very happy with his new contract, and I couldn't be any more thrilled to have another four years with Mr. Sagrino, maybe five. Is it five, Paul? Five?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, two years on my existing, and, uh, the, the vote would be to extend it by additional three years to make it a total of five.
Okay, thank you. So we have a total of five years left with Mr. Sagrino, and I couldn't be happier. If people, um, could understand what this man does for this town, I'm gonna let you all speak, and, uh, just phenomenal, just absolutely incredible what he does for this town. Uh, the hours that we spend up here, uh, each one of these selectmen probably put in twenty to twenty-five hours a week on what we do, and every time there's a phone call out there, the first one's the Paul, and now we go from there. So I'm gonna let Jimmy finish off now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That, that was kind of what it was, what it was getting at, is if you wanted me to mention specifics, because when we sat with Mr. Sagrino, although he has done all this work during a pandemic and done above and beyond what a normal town administrator does, he, he actually came to us and said he would be taking a zero percent increase this year. And I just wanted to get that out there. It, Mr. Sagrino came to us and said, I'm gonna be taking, I'll, I'll take a zero, basically. So that's what I wanted to put out there, and I'll leave the, uh, rest of the comments to the, uh, other members of the board.
All right. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've had the opportunity, you know, in my longevity here on the board to have worked with, uh, three, uh, town administrators right now, uh, each one different, uh, each one, uh, quite successful and capable in what they did, uh, for the town and for me and the members of the board. Uh, and, and Paul certainly stands out among those three, um, for, for the work he does, uh, in the effort he takes to be balanced. Uh, he's always willing to look at, uh, both sides of a discussion, uh, without just casually blowing off one side or the other. He'll listen, uh, and then make a decision, and, uh, I'm proud to have supported him the first time, and I intend to support him this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Bob's quite accurate. You know, uh, I, I also have had the opportunity to work with the, uh, three town administrators, all, um, very good people, uh, but, uh, also, as Bob noted, three different, three distinct, uh, management styles. Um, I, I'd like to thank, uh, John Denizio and, and Joanne Faust for assisting us, uh, throughout this process. Um, they provided us with, uh, uh, some, some, some comps from, uh, surrounding communities as well as prepared the assessment, uh, form for us. Uh, Paul meets or exceeded expectations in every single category, um, which I thought was, uh, rather remarkable, having only, you know, been, uh, in, in that leadership position for just a couple of years. I, I think he's adapted remarkably well and ahead of schedule. Um, I'm pleased to support Paul's, uh, contract extension and, I appreciate the, uh, subcommittee, uh, on their work in this, in this effort. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think, you know, Paul, Paul works his hours, and then Paul works our hours. Um, you know, and, and I mean, you know, if there's ever a, a call or a, or a text, he's always getting back to us very promptly. Um, and if he doesn't know the answer, he's, he's working on getting us the answer. Um, you know, he makes time for us, and, you know, um, he's, he's not afraid to, um, you know, get creative with his thinking. I know, you know, when this meeting started nearly three hours ago, um, you know, we were talking about, uh, you know, Deputy Brown and, you know, his, uh, abilities. And I think that, you know, what we see consistently, uh, is, you know, leadership and action. You know, we see, uh, those, you know, who are willing to go above and beyond and set an example and a benchmark. Um, and it's no, no doubt, uh, that Paul has risen to a town administrator within, uh, the town of Burlington because he does those things, uh, and he continues to do those things. And foregoing, um, you know, a pay raise in what is otherwise a physically difficult year, um, you know, is, is leadership and action. He is, he is speaking through his actions. Uh, and so for that, uh, Paul, thank you, uh, for, you know, setting that example, um, you know, with, with your own, right? It's not, you know, asking others to sacrifice without you sacrificing first. So, um, if that in and of itself doesn't show you how, you know, Paul functions as a leader, a town administrator, I, I don't know what does. Um, I, of course, support this, this contract extension, uh, and very much look forward to continuing working with Paul. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, I guess that's it, gentlemen. I, I, I'd like to keep going on because I can actually see Paul sweating from here, because we know how much he loves this kind of accolade of him, you know, saying how wonderful he is and stuff, and he's ready to punch me in the head. Pretty close. Anyway, uh, gentlemen, I'll need a motion to approve Mr. Sagrino's contract at this point. So...
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion, we approve Mr. Sagrino's contract extension, as mentioned in the backup.
Second by Nick. All right, gentlemen, roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy, yes. Okay, Paul, you're all set.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Sagrino, did you feel me talk about you as much as we do like this?
Not exactly, uh, but I would like to say, uh, thank you very much to the board for your unwavering support. Um, as I've said before, I know that I have a lot to learn still, and, uh, I know that I'm gonna strive to get better every single ye- every single year that goes by. Um, just as a secondary note, you know, I could not do, um, what I'm able to do for you folks without all the great assistance I have here at the town, uh, the office staff, our department heads, our employees. Uh, we, we definitely could not do what we do around here without having great, uh, employees through and through. And again, I'm, I'm, you know how much I love being here, and I love this job, and love working for the town, and I'm very grateful, uh, just not, you know, have a place to be for the next, for the next five years. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Uh, just, I thought you were gonna bring up Mr. Denizio, because we know his contract's coming up next. So I thought you were gonna kind of like, yeah, John's been a great asset to me. I don't know what it'd be like to work without him, blah, 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 you know? That's where I thought we were going. Johnny, you're next, kid. Yeah, I know. Anyway, let's go right on to minutes. Gentlemen? January eleventh, twentieth?
I'll make a motion that we approve the January eleventh meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made by second. Uh, are we doing them all at once? Did you just say all three of them? Paul?
Are we doing three or two?
We're doing two. The eleventh is in the twentieth now, so we need the twentieth and the eighth is what we need.
All right, then I, then I'll make the motion for all three, the January eleventh, January twentieth, and February eighth.
Hey, motion and second by Mike. All those, oh, all those in favor. I want to do that one time before I leave, but we can't. Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
All right. Um, gentlemen, I'm gonna change a couple of things up tonight. I, I, we usually do subcommittee reports, but I'm gonna do the chairman's report right now first. Uh, I think you're gonna be okay with it, because, uh, I got a couple of things I'd like to get off my chest, to be honest with you, and they're, and they're all coming. You ready? So, gentlemen, it's been my pleasure to serve you as chairman for the last two years on this board. Uh, it's been an honor to do this. I've learned a lot about who I am as a person and what I can do and what I can't do. I've learned a lot about the town of Burlington. I've learned a lot about individuals. I can't thank all of you enough for guiding me in certain directions, which was a benefit to me. Uh, we've accomplished quite a bit, uh, going, going forward. We did the fire station. We did the new building, the DPW building. We hired, um, we hired, uh, paramedics now. Uh, we're working on a couple of other things that are incredible. Uh, as you know, uh, myself and Mike were up for reelection this year. I'm not gonna get into a whole thing, but I plan on sitting here, uh, not in the chairman's seat, but on the board of selectmen in the future. Uh, one thing that has really, really stood out to me, and it really has nothing to do with anything except for this, this lovely little piece of wood right here that I have, this gavel. So this gavel was given to the town of Burlington in January thirty-first, nineteen seventy-four. That was, Gary Genie, who was, probably wasn't even in high school at that point, only because he's helped me out with this stuff. I graduated high school in seventy-six. I just want to be thankful that I've been part of board of selectmen that actually get to bang this gavel opening and closing meetings. Uh, it's meant a lot to me, and there's more I could say, but, gentlemen, thank you so much for allowing me to be your chairman for the last two years. And I know after April twelfth, we have to rearrange this board, and, uh, we'll figure that out. But thank you so much. I appreciate it. I really do. Thank you. Now we can go into the subcommittees. But we'll start with, uh, Mr. Tigges.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing tonight for a subcommittee.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mike Kent has, uh, uh, something that he wanted to make sure got out, uh, that he's pleased to announce that the department, his department, the Burlington Police Department, has received national honors as an outstanding public safety drone program. The department was one of three recognized in February by drone responders and unprofit that promotes innovation and improved operational effectiveness in public safety drone use. Uh, he said, "I'm very proud of the drone team for receiving national recognition in just its second year. It is a testament to the dedication and professionalism shown by Sergeant Peter Abish..." Oh, my goodness, Abish Kahorn, Officer Sage Costa, and Officer Daniel Main. And I'm sure someone will correct me on the first one, and I apologize. "The department has used drones to enhance police work and increase safety for first responders in the Burlington community. The department has used drones in search and rescue missions, tactical missions, evidence recovery, and fires, and to document automobile accidents and impaired driving stops. Uh, during one SWAT mission, an operator flew a drone to view inside the second floor of a house, allowing officers to see the occupant barricaded inside. By operating a drone, drone over an incident or mission, we're able to keep our officers and the community safe, according to Officer Costa." So congratulations to the team, uh, for, uh, this recognition.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to clear, clean that up a little?
Yeah, please.
That would be Sergeant Peter Abaskaroon.
All right. Sorry, Peter.
Don't be sorry. He can handle it. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before I get into, uh, my subcommittee reports, I noticed that Sally Willard had commented with regard to, this is a point of, uh, order. Uh, she had commented around, uh, how can someone answer that with regard to the small cell stuff? So if when Attorney Pari, uh, is responding, if he could just reference where it was already answered, I think it'll just help in terms of clarification. So I'm just saying that out loud so that we're all on the same page. Um, so I'll, I'll try to be quick, and I know that's a little bit to say for me. Um, so ISAC has been meeting, uh, regularly, uh, to establish both their charter as well as a cybersecurity policy. Uh, they were reviewing both drafted versions, uh, in an effort to try and get those, um, approved and moving forward, uh, for us to take a look at. Uh, and then, once I get a hot second, I'm gonna circle back with them around the social media policy. Um, economic development, I just want to bring to everyone's attention that this Wednesday, uh, the... the 24th at 6:30 PM, Melissa will be holding our second community chat. So, on top of everything else that Melissa Tocqueletta does for our community with regards to economic and community development, she is making an effort to run this series on a quarterly basis, and it's aimed at creating transparency and clear lines of communication with the residents of Burlington. The last one was very open-ended. This one, we're going to try to get some conversation around the recent place making survey that she had sent out and gotten, I think it was like 530-some-odd survey results on that, so try to further that conversation plus a little more. So, again, it's this Wednesday, the 24th, at 6:30 PM. Slavon Tigges and I need to reconnect on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Subcommittee, and hopes to get that off the ground, but just, I know there was some comments in the conversation earlier with regards to a town-wide perspective, a Burlington Equity Coalition was established, made up of many Burlington-based organizations, and just to name a few, we've got People Helping People, Helpies, the IAB, and Women Aid, and that's just a couple. You can go to their website and check out more there. We are working to establish, adjust some kind of transportation subcommittee. It may be an evolution of the B-Lincoln Subcommittee. We're going to, Slavon, Ronnie, and I are going to take a look at that, but Slavon, Ronnie, and I sat with the town meeting transportation committee, because they're working toward a presentation for May, and so we just had a conversation around path forward, or paths forward, rather, you know, in an effort to strategically align everyone, you know, for what can be happening with a, you know, overarching transportation plan, right, initiatives, what have you. There's a lot of different things out there, so the question becomes, you know, what's going to be good for Burlington moving forward? As it was pointed out, there's a lot of data, but a lot of it's old, and so, you know, now we're looking for newer studies, and just recently forwarded a study that was actually recently done for the Terriav Win Street 3A, you know, area right in the center, that was done back in December with some really great insights, so hoping to leverage that moving forward, and I can share that forward if those haven't seen it. And then lastly, looking forward to connecting with you, Mr. Chairman and Paul, around the proposal and action plan for a communications plan, you know, town-wide effort, not really a subcommittee yet, but just something that I'm excited about and looking forward to getting off. So, with that, I am done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to lend my voice to the chorus of municipal officials from across the country condemning the cowardly acts of random violence against the Asian-American community. These acts are often being perpetrated against unsuspecting, defenseless senior citizens and cannot be tolerated. I am certain that I speak for all of my colleagues here tonight, joining me, when I say violence against any person or persons in our community will be dealt with swiftly. It's unfortunate that anyone would have to make these type of comments at a selectmen's meeting, and I certainly hope that this nonsense stops. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything to add this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I think at this point, let's accept a motion. Motion by Michael.
Second.
All three is? I have to go order here. Mr. Hogan. Give me it, but that's okay. I got your idea. Mr. Tigges.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Last time, boys, thank you.
Good night, everybody.